It's very important to prepare before a storm gets here. That's not the time to start making a plan. Right now is the time to know what your risk is, what your plans are for your family, how to stay informed, and how to get involved and volunteer so that you can help your community before the storm gets here. Take preparedness seriously, as in these past couple of years, we never know how disaster will evolve. If you wait till the last minute, that's when everybody's in there wanting to get those last little bit of supplies. Take your time in making sure that you have all the exact items that you need to put in your emergency kit. That should be able to support you for up to at least seven days. It's important to know your evacuation zone. If we get into a situation where a decision has to be made that you're in danger from the surge coming in that's created by a storm event, that you know when your zone is called that it's time for you to go. Preparedness, preparedness, preparedness. You never know what the hazard is going to be, what the event is going to be, but if you take those basic steps that we talked about, it can apply to any hazard that impacts Hillsborough County and your family will stay safe.
Good morning and welcome to the September 20th, 2023 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by Chaplain Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Heavenly Father, we thank you for who you are and your great love that you have for everyone. We thank you for our men and women that are serving in the military and also our law enforcement, firefighters, and first responders. We thank you for their life of service, and we ask you to protect their lives as they protect and help others. We pray for those that have lost family members and loved ones. We pray for a great peace that passes all understanding over their hearts and their minds, and we pray that it is well with everyone in Hillsborough County in their spirit, soul, and body. And we pray for every commissioner here for wisdom and knowledge that will be a blessing to the people of Hillsborough County, and we ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. We have two special commendations to present this morning, and I'll present the first Well, good morning, everyone. As a former high school baseball player, whose team never made it past districts, it's a real honor for me to present this first commendation to state champions Sickles High School Griffins. With the following individuals, please join me at the podium. You have Krista Luloff, the principal, Greg Lewandowski, assistant principal, Eric Luxus, coach, and I know we have the A.D. here as well, if you want to come on up, and as well as the team. If you guys could come on and just kind of get behind us here. So as you can see, these guys are monsters, and so there's no surprise that they won the state baseball title. But thank everyone for coming. Griffin is a mythical animal typically having the features of both an eagle and a lion. Like their mascot, the Griffins of the Sickles High School baseball team have the fearless tenacity and power of both, but they are no myth. Far from it, they're the 2023 state baseball champions. This outstanding team overcame a disappointing conclusion to the 2022 season, learned from it, and was deeply motivated to reach the pinnacle of their sport this past season. It is a great privilege to present the Sickles High School baseball Griffins the following commendation in recognition of an incredible achievement that every high school athlete dreams about but few achieve. The commendation reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to congratulate the Sickles High School baseball Griffins for a dominating 2023 season that culminated in the program's first state championship, a phenomenal accomplishment and a hotbed of interscholastic baseball. After losing a heartbreaker in the state semifinals in 2022, the Griffins were not to be denied in 2023, remaining hungry, eager, and sharply focused to complete a mission. A team with tremendous coaching and leadership, Sickles advanced to the state final four for the second straight year, this time on an amazing 20-game winning streak. In the Class 6A state semifinal, the Griffins topped Winter Springs behind a Shohei Ohtani-like performance from senior slugger and ace Caden McDonald, who tossed a complete game, 2-0 victory with just one opponent reaching base and homered. In the state title game, the Griffins overcame two foes, a two-hour-plus lightning delay in Vieira High, which had defeated defending champion Doral Academy. With timely hitting, stellar defense, and strong pitching, the Griffins left Fort Myers as state champions after a 4-2 victory. Sickles finished the season with incredible 30-2 record and a 22-game winning streak, earning the overall number-three state ranking. The mission was complete. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, is hereby commend head coach Eric Luxus, his staff, and the entire team for bringing home the state title and wishes the program continued success executed this 20th day of September 2023. And before I present this to Principal Luloff, I just want to say, Coach, thank you for everything you do for these men, both on and off the field. As a former high school player and college player, I've often said that some of life's greatest lessons are learned on the ball field. And so thank you for everything you do, and a special thank you also to all the parents for, I know you make a ton of sacrifices so these men could play ball through the years and keep playing and keep focused on their dream. So thank you very much. So it's a privilege to present this, give this to you, and if you want to say a few words.
I'm Krista Luloff, the principal of Sickles. I've actually been at Sickles for 20 years now. I started there as a first-year teacher, and now I'm the principal. And I couldn't be more proud of this team and this coach. The one thing I want to point out and make very clear is that these guys are not just athletes, they are so strong in the classroom academically. Almost all of them are in advanced placement courses, and they're one of the highest-ranked teams in our school as far as overall GPA. So I just want to recognize that and give them a hand for that as well. And I'm going to turn it over to our athletic director, Mr. Lewandowski.
Thank you, thank you. Couldn't have said it better than Ms. Luloff, but just models for success. Coach Luxus and all the boys and the other coaches as well, I mean, just models. If you come out to their practice, this is what you expect to see from a professional baseball program. It truly is, and that's what it takes to win. They somehow created the perfect storm last year, and that wasn't by accident, that was by being disciplined and just down-to-earth guys. You watch these guys in the hallway, they're the same disciplined types of kids that they are on the field, they are just good citizens. So thank you, guys, and congratulations again.
I just want to thank you, guys, for hosting us here this morning. It's an honor to stand up here today in front of you. You know, these guys got the ultimate goal. You know, we talk about it every single year, you know, our goal is to win the last game of the season. And, you know, we talk about it, but few are very, get the opportunity to actually do it. So, you know, it's a pleasure to be up here today in front of you, just to continue our congratulations towards our team, our program, and our community. I have a great group of players. Every returning player is here behind me today. We did graduate 12, so 12 of them are off to college right now. A lot of them are going to be continuing their baseball careers, but they're all going to college institutes, and they're all going to be great, great citizens to our community. So that's what we're about, is we're about turning these kids into young men, and we're doing a pretty good job with that. So just a final congratulations to our players for representing, you know, our school and our community in the right way. So players, thank you again.
All right, is there a team captain, anyone that wants to say a few words?
Come on, T.
I know you're not shy.
Yeah, it was a good season. We had a lot of ups and downs, a lot of kind of early challenges, but we had this really special group of kids. Senior class was strong leaders, and we just kind of kept pushing through towards the end, and it was great to win with that team. So I'm happy about that.
Well, Coach, congratulations again on an outstanding season, and we look forward to having you guys back here in about a year. How's that? Okay, let's take a quick picture.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm sure all of my colleagues are stunned to see me down here giving a proclamation, but it is not a joke. Would Chris Letzos, CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters of Tampa Bay, please join me at the podium? Good to see you again, Mr. Letzos. How are you? Good to see you. I'll give it to you in a second. Good morning and welcome. For nearly 120 years, Big Brothers Big Sisters, in its numerous chapters, have been instrumental in mentoring youth across the nation and right here in Hillsborough County. By carefully matching children with mentors who can truly make a difference in their lives, this organization positively impacts the lives of kids in profound ways that few others can. Our local chapter does a phenomenal job. Big Brothers Big Sisters of Tampa Bay has served more than 2,100 children in Hillsborough, Pinellas, Polk, Pasco, Citrus, Hernando, Sumter, Alachua, and Marion Counties. It is my pleasure to present this proclamation, which recognizes the wonderful work this organization does for our community. The proclamation reads, "Since 1904, Big Brothers Big Sisters has operated under the belief that inherent in every child is incredible potential. Big Brothers Big Sisters makes meaningful monitored matches between adult volunteers and children aged five through young adulthood in communities across the country. The mission of Big Brothers Big Sisters is to create and support one-to-one mentoring relationships that ignite the power and promise of youth. Big Brothers Big Sisters mentoring programs have proven to build relationships that help improve academic achievement, promote responsible decision-making, and provide the skills to better navigate relationships at school, in social settings, and at home. Big Brothers Big Sisters has provided mentoring since services in Hillsborough County for over 50 years. Big Brothers Big Sisters offers unique mentoring programs in Hillsborough County that facilitate youth mentoring in the workplace, such as school-to-work, law enforcement, and first-responder mentors, including BIGs and Blue Badges and mentee support post-high school, such as Big Futures. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is fully committed to supporting youth mentoring initiatives provided by Big Brothers Big Sisters. September is recognized as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month, celebrating the benefits of youth mentoring across the nation. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County does hereby declare September 2023 as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to show their support for Big Brothers Big Sisters for their hard work and dedication of the youth to the nation executed this 20th day of September 2023."
Well, good morning, and thank you, Commissioner Wostel, for sponsoring this and to the entire commission and to Hillsborough County. You know, this month's big for us. It's our opportunity to stand before those we serve and just to simply say thank you. And we serve thousands of young people in our program, and it's all because of caring adult volunteers, BIGs, who give of their time to make sure that our littles can see a path forward, no matter their circumstance, no matter where they come from, no matter what holds them back, they have a BIG there to lift them up and to guide them and to support them. And we can't do that without our communities, without Hillsborough County's support, and without each and every stakeholder that makes this incredible work possible. This month, in celebration and recognition of Big Brothers Big Sisters Month, we're also announcing our 60th anniversary here in Tampa Bay, and we're excited to share that it takes little to be big. So for those in the audience and those on TV who are wondering if they can do it, all it takes is sometimes just a slice of pizza with a young person, a simple tour of your business, and you never know what future that's going to help develop in that young person. So we're incredibly thankful for this opportunity and incredibly humbled to serve Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Please, anybody that would like to join, and while you're gathering, I will tell you that my first work with Big Brothers Sisters years ago, their Director of Business Development actually used to be a prosecutor who told me that he was tired of being the iron fist at the end of the journey and decided that he wanted to help break the cycle and prevent them from ever getting to his office. I think it's a very special program.
Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one revision or correction to the agenda. Item B6 is now item A38. This is to approve an agreement with Promise Network, a technology company selected by the Commerce Department to expedite distribution of low-income household water assistance program funds. We have several items for time certain. The first one is item D1 at 10:00 a.m. This is to conduct a public hearing pertaining to the regulation of emergency medical transport entities. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing and consider enacting an ordinance amending the county's construction apprenticeship program. Item D3 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing and consider enacting an ordinance amending the ordinances relating to the cone of silence. Item D4 at 10 a.m. is to open and continue to November 1st, 2023, at the Board of County Commissioners meeting, the first of two required public hearings regarding the designation of a brownfield area for the parcel located at 4810 South 50th Street in Tampa, 33619, and to reschedule the second community meeting. Item D5 at 10 o'clock is to hold a public hearing to receive public input and discuss modifying the approved list of projects for Phase 4 of the Community Investment Tax to add three new projects. Item E1 at 10:15 is a special appearance by Eric Hart, President and CEO of the Tampa Sports Authority, to present a feasibility analysis of an indoor fieldhouse facility, and also Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, to present a feasibility analysis of an outdoor tournament complex for baseball or softball. Item G1 is related to item E2 at 10:30. This is to receive a report regarding human trafficking. Item E2, related to G1, also at 10:30, is to receive a special appearance by Clara Reynolds, President and CEO of the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, to present information on the Crisis Center's South Shore expansion and human trafficking. Item B5 at 10:30 is to approve the first modification of the agreement with the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay for the provision of sexual assault services nurse examiners at the South Shore site. Item B2 at 11 o'clock is to accept the County Internal Auditor's 2024 Annual Audit Plan performed by the county's Internal Auditor's Office. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve the changes, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried 7 to 0.
All right, the Board of going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern, or your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time, when you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally at a commissioner or staff member, but rather the issues, the Board has set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the Board, please state your name, speak clearly in the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. The first three speakers this morning, David Coleman, Ernst Colleen, and then Gary Searls. Mr. Coleman? Not here. Is there Ernst Colleen? Oh, okay. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Dave Coleman, and I'm here to fully support the Food and Water Watch's request to pursue federal money for solar and weatherization that was rejected by Tallahassee. But I'm also here to speak about A14 and say, of course, that we need to provide our returning citizens with basic health care. As they become earners, they'll outgrow the need for that program. The health card has saved thousands of us over the past 30 years from a lot of pain and anguish. I grew up in the '50s when we believed in America, when Reagan was a cowboy and Enron was ignored. I watched American Values Leave It To Beaver show. I must have missed the episode where the bee went to mom and dad and laddered Wally for giving a portion of his lunch money to the kid with holes in his shoes in the cafeteria. When my commission goes through the public comments at our state delegation meeting in once a 30-year-old, state-created, program destroyed, I'm sickened. That program saved my eyesight after two ER rooms sent me home to go blind the rest of the way. Thousands at the Salvation Army, Tampa General ER room, are working poor, houseless, or single parents are now threatened. When my commission is abusive to women, especially women of color, I want an ethics investigation. This is from a USF article this year. Hillsborough expanded eligibility to residents earning up to $175 of the federal poverty level for a single household that's about $1,900 a month. All of this is paid for by a half-cent sales tax the county has been using since the program was created in the early '90s. Jay Wilson, a public health professor, senior associate dean at the University of South Florida's Morsany College of Medicine, helped get it off the ground. That was an educational process, and quite frankly, it took a lot of resources, Wilson said. Wilson and others who championed the plan included the late Hillsborough County Commissioner Phyllis Bozansky, who spent years working with businesses and elected officials to get the support for the program. It wasn't just the Hillsborough Commission they had to convince, they also needed the state legislature to pass a law allowing counties to impose the tax like this. It was a tough sell at times, but Wilson said he's proud to see the work paid off. Getting the local community to buy into value of its own citizens, Wilson said, "A healthy community is a productive community. It's an economically credible community." I had some other stuff I wanted to say, but I do want to address the budget tomorrow night. We have a $9 billion budget to look at, and I'm reading bits and pieces, 20 million, 100 million, 50 million. I really want to see a pie chart tomorrow night that kind of at least somehow explains where the $9 billion is going and why my garbage bill is going up.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next speaker, it says Ernst Colleen, I'm one of his, Colleen Ernst. Yep, okay. Then Gary Searls, and then Lori Morrison is virtual. Sorry about that, Ms. Ernst.
No worries. Good morning, Colleen Ernst. I'm here in my capacity as a technical expert on the hospital-directed payment program, and I'm also here joined by several representatives from hospitals here in Hillsborough County. Before the Board today is item B4, which has to do with the letters Before the Board today is item B four, which has to do with the letters of agreement that must be signed by the county and returned to the Agency for Healthcare Administration. That's pursuant to a statutory requirement under 40990826. It is a hard deadline. That letter must be returned by October 1st. This is the Board's opportunity to consider that letter. I would stress that returning the letter is an up-to commitment. By signing the letter, the county is indicating it will send up to a specific dollar value. Of course, sending less than that dollar value does fulfill that agreement. The only thing that the county is committing to is not sending more than the outlined amount. What would follow from this is a special assessment on hospitals only, and that is only hospitals, no individual citizens, no other businesses. That matter should be coming before the Board, before the end of the year. Those funds are the funds that would be obligated under this letter, should the Board decide to move forward with that. So I just, I wanted to say that I'm here to answer any questions, if the Board has any, or as this continues to progress, we're happy to be available to explain the importance of this program. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Gary Searls, followed by Lori Morrison, which is virtual, and then Melanie Brown. Morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Gary Searls. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for HCA Brandon Hospital, and as you just heard from the DPP program that you'll have before you, very important program over the last few years, especially, we've used funds of this nature to help, one, bridge the gap between what we get from Medicaid. Medicaid only covers about 60% of our Medicaid expenses, and this brings us up to close to 85%. The other key thing is this funding helps us fund wage increases. That has been post-pandemic at astronomical rates for hospitals across the nation, especially here in Hillsborough County with all the growth where we received a lot of new families into the area, and we need to continue to serve those families into the future. So thanks again to the Board of County Commissioners to hear this, but also the work that is done with their staff with the Hillsborough County Health Plan, because they're integral in this overall operations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lori Morrison, are you virtual?
This is Lori Morrison on behalf of Moffitt. I would just say, in addition to what was just mentioned, we are supportive of this program because it does improve access to specialty cancer care for all of the Medicaid patients in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Melanie Brown, followed by Jason Rodriguez, and then Steve Harris. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Hagan, members of the Commission. My name is Melanie Brown. I'm the Director of Government Advocacy for Advent Health's West Florida Division, and I actually have another representative from our system and executive that will also be speaking shortly and for the importance of this important program. So thank you very much for your support.
All right, thank you. Jason Rodriguez, followed by Steve Harris, and then Joe Johnson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chair Hagan, Commissioners. My name is Jason Rodriguez. I'm Director of Government Relations for Bay Care Health System. We are a private nonprofit healthcare provider in Hillsborough County in west central Florida, and we have the St. Joseph's Hospitals and South Florida Baptist Hospital in Hillsborough. Echo my colleagues' comments. We are very supportive of the directed payment program. Urge the Commission to support item B four and the letters of agreement that will go to ACHA. This program has helped with the Medicaid shortfall and helped us increase access. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steve Harris? Steve here? Okay, we have Joe Johnson and then Chris Khan. Okay, Steve.
Thanks, Chair Hagan. Good morning, Commissioners. As in prior year, I'm here today representing Tampa General Hospital for these letter of agreements. There's actually two letter of agreements. You heard Colleen talk about the directed payment program. We call it DPP. There's also another one, the Low Income Pool. I just wanted to give you a reminder on those and how important they are. The Low Income Pool is a program that is aimed at charity. It's actually covered under the Florida 1115 Medicaid waiver. Data from the most recent state fiscal year will reflect that Tampa General Hospital provides $80 million in charity care costs. This Low Income Pool program is critical to help subsidize a portion of that charity care. The directed payment program is a different program, but equally is vital. It focuses on Medicaid shortfall, so that's the difference between the cost of providing services to Medicaid beneficiaries and the actual payment from the state. That is a very wide gap. Approximately 5 million Floridians rely on Medicaid for health care coverage. Hillsborough County is in the top five counties in the state for Medicaid enrollees. Enrollees include the state's poorest children, elderly, pregnant women, and individuals with disabilities. Roughly half of the births in Florida are Medicaid births, and a significant number of those occur at Tampa General Hospital. This program also vitally important to TGH. Both of these programs, the Low Income Pool and the DPP, have been incorporated into our budget beginning October 1, 2023. Again, we thank you for your support of these critical programs.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Joe Johnson, followed by Chris Khan, and then Brooke Ward. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Hagan and honorable members of the Commission. I am Joe Johnson. I'm the CEO at Advent Health Carrollwood, and I'm representing both Advent Health Carrollwood and Advent Health Tampa, and I just want to also express appreciation for the support that you've given in the past. This is a very valuable service to this community. It has helped us as hospitals to be able to help those who are vulnerable in this community. It also helps dynamically help with growth and support in this community for the hospitals, the programs, and the services that we are all trying to give to these very important patients of ours. So thank you for your previous support, and I look forward to your support and working with you again in this year. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Chris Khan, followed by Brooke Ward, and then David Sinclair, which is virtual. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you guys today. I'm Chris Khan. I'm the CFO at South Shore Hospital in Sun City Center, and I just want to echo my colleagues' support of the DPP program. Because this helps us defray our costs, we're able to expand our services in the community, especially down in Sun City where our hospital is located. Another piece of this that I want to expand upon is that this funding follows the patient, so the hospitals that are treating your Medicaid patients will receive this funding in proportion to how many patients that they're treating. And so, again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Brooke Ward? Good morning.
Well, good morning, Chair Hagan, County Commission. I hope you all had a wonderful, yet hot, summer. As you know, I'm Brooke Ward. I'm the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch. I'm here representing over 5,500 Hillsborough County residents to talk to you about our rising electricity bills and our crippling energy burden. Earlier this summer, $346 million that could have come to Florida families was denied, and that would have gone directly to providing energy efficiency upgrades for Florida families. That would have decreased their energy use, and in turn, it would have decreased their energy bills. Well, that money still might end up coming, and they're actually looking to possibly bring it to local governments to administer, so just keep your eyes open for that. We'd love to see that happen. But Hillsborough County recently put in an application in August for $831,000 through the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. And although the programs that have been flagged in that application are good programs, we feel this is a missed opportunity for the money to go directly to our biggest need. Hillsborough residents are drowning. They're drowning in bills, and this energy efficiency money could either go to creating a much overdue energy efficiency program for the entire county so that we can really start reducing bills, or also could be used toward rebate programs to directly help Hillsborough residents. I don't want you to miss this opportunity. You know, we've been coming to you, we've been asking for support. For the past six months, activists have been demanding that Hillsborough County move off of fossil fuels that have been driving our rising rates and our rising fees, and this is a golden opportunity to begin to make good on those demands. Energy efficiency is the cheapest, easiest, quickest way for us to reduce the amount of energy that we're using, and it's the best way to reduce our bills while we're moving off of dirty, volatile fossil fuels. Chair Hagan Commission, please seize this opportunity. Although the application's in, it's coming back to you, where you get to decide how that money is ultimately used. Hundreds of thousands of dollars are the start to funding a truly comprehensive program here in Hillsborough County. And take this opportunity, seize this opportunity, to launch a community-driven plan to address the crippling energy burden. We urge you to schedule a public workshop imminently, having trouble with that word this morning, imminently, so that when that money comes back to Hillsborough County, we have a plan in place to make it work and to help Hillsborough residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. We have David Sinclair, who's virtual, followed by Peyton Hoey and Todd Randolph. Mr. Sinclair, are you virtual?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. My name is David Sinclair. I am with LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens. I'm the President of Council 7259 locally in this area. I wish to address the issue of the electric energy burdens. Our families in the county suffer under the weight of the energy burdens, and I believe that we want you, as Commissioners, to be our allies. We are the people, and we trust in you, and we come to you on these occasions like today because we do believe that you are our leaders, and we are the people, and we trust you. So we're turning today to you, again, as we do in the past, to ask you to develop a comprehensive plan to lower the energy demand of our county and give us advice and give us direction so that we can all lower our energy demand and lower our energy bills, but at the same time to start the lengthy and perhaps painful transition off of dirty energy bills, dirty energy fossil fuels. We turn to you, really, and the big question is, though, we know that these federal funds have been requested. When they come, help us to use these funds appropriately. It's a 13-letter word, appropriately, so that they may address the energy burdens of our community. It is not a big request, it is an honest request from our hearts. Help us form a comprehensive plan. We come to you because we trust in you. So help us on our energy burdens. We trust in you, and help us address this. A public hearing on this issue would be the smartest way for you to show us how you trust our wisdom, and we trust in you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Peyton Hoey, followed by Todd Randolph and Marilyn Worlick. Good morning.
My name is Peyton Hoey, and I stand here today as a recent alum of the University of South Florida, a former substitute teacher here on Hillsborough County, and as one of the over 500 USF members of GenClio, a youth-led climate movement dedicated to climate education and justice. When DeSantis turned away the $346 million in energy efficiency funding for our state, he turned his back on working families, on students, on renters, and on immigrants, as well as the public of Florida as a whole. I'm here to ask that Hillsborough County doesn't do the same. While this money is still up in the air, we call on you to secure the available $831,000 in federal energy efficiency funds slotted for Hillsborough County, and to ensure these funds go toward relieving the financial burden our communities face from fossil-fuel-driven utility rate hikes. It's no secret that the cost of living in Hillsborough is skyrocketing. A recent study revealed that in order to afford the average rent in Tampa, a person would need to make over $800,000 a year. This is beyond unrealistic and an attack against our communities. According to the Tampa Bay Times, over 600,000 families are living paycheck to paycheck in the Tampa Bay area. That is two out of every five families. Like rising rents, our power bills are skyrocketing. With the climate crisis intensifying, our days are becoming hotter and hotter, requiring air conditioning on full blast, and even those who may attempt to conserve power are unable to afford the energy efficiency upgrades that could significantly reduce their bills. After two years of continuous pressure from the community and countless workshops and listening sessions, we have seen the city of Tampa release its first-ever Climate Action and Equity Plan. It's apparent, now more than ever, that Hillsborough must follow in their footsteps. A plan like this is not only possible for Hillsborough County, but it is a necessity, and it starts with listening to the voices of the communities that you represent. Your constituents are counting on you. Today, I join the Tampa Bay Climate Alliance in urging you to secure these crucial federal energy efficiency dollars for Hillsborough County in order to launch a comprehensive plan to lower our energy demand and our bills while we transition off of dirty fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoey. We got Todd Randolph, and then Marilyn Worlick, which is virtual, and then Brittany Panton.
Hello, good morning. My name is Todd Randolph. I'm a resident of Tampa, and I'm involved in a few local organizations, including Food and Water Watch, which are committed to protecting the environment we live in and preserving the quality of life for the local residents. I am here today to encourage the Hillsborough County Commission to explore funds for energy efficiency to help local residents. I'm making this request right now because I see how the energy bills have increased and how that has affected my neighbors and the community. I live close by, right down Kennedy on Metanzas, local street here, which has a great Tampa fun fact, it's named after the third-largest city in Cuba, Metanzas, which in Spanish is translated to "the killings" or "the massacre," and there's a great story behind that that's worth the Google. And on that street, I have neighbors that I talk to, and everybody knows about increased electric bills, and the neighbors will concede that they are facing financial duress from increased electric bills. They are looking for any options to help. Some are lifelong residents in Tampa that are feeling squeezed out of the market, the only place that they have ever called home. Everyone is interested in any opportunity for energy efficiency. I'm asking the County Commission to bring energy efficiency dollars to Hillsborough County and to explore all options to ensure sustainable growth in this county's future through such measures as a climate action plan.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Marilyn Worlick, virtual. Marilyn, you on the line?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. I'm Marilyn Worlick. Hi, and I'm a member of Food and Water Watch. I'm a retired social worker and resident of Hillsborough County, and as a mother and a grandmother and a dear friend in my church community, I'm here out of concern that so many of our young folks that I see are under such financial stress for day-to-day bills as costs rise, and these missed opportunities with this federal energy efficiency dollars have such a possibility to put that hand out in what may be a small act but have a big meaning of helping with day-to-day bills. Such efforts would help them grow confidence in managing the landscape of these challenging times for young folks as we see the climate crises and events increase, as well as the costs of living, as have already been mentioned, are just skyrocketing. Personally, I know individuals closely, our lawn man is a young man striving to go to college and at the same time mentoring young people on how to develop a work ethic and how to reach out and help folks in his neighborhood who are so poor and low-income. He inspires my husband and I. We talk with him every time he comes to our yard, and members in our neighborhood who work at the grocery stores and the stress they're under throughout the day, go into any- under throughout the day, going to any grocery store, you see how busy they are, and yet making ends meet and paying these increasing rates on the electricity is yet another burden that they face, as well as repairs for wind damage and storm damage. And then the young folks who are beginning careers, a couple of teachers I know and in software, and they're having to rent rooms and share houses because they can't afford rent, and then they have to add to that these increasing costs of utility bills, without seeming to be a hand coming out from local government of decreasing these costs with planning for energy efficiency funds that can actually touch them on a daily basis. We know the challenges, and we can offer examples of how to make the changes toward a sustainable living happen if we can just take advantage of these federal energy-efficient dollars into the Hillsborough County area and launch a comprehensive plan to lower our energy demand and our bills while we transition off of dirty fossil fuels. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Worlick. Next three speakers, Brittany Panton, followed by Brittany Silveira, and then Juan Palas Saldana.
Good morning. Hello. My name is Brittany Panton, and I have been a resident of Hillsborough County for 34 years. I am a Tampa organizing for Central Florida Job with Justice. I am here to talk about energy burden and the rising of our rate hikes. The rate hikes is something that affects us all. The use of fossil fuels is changing every day, so the cost of our utility bills are not staying the same, it's only going up. Earlier October, I got an email saying that TECO was going to lower our rates. I haven't heard nothing back from it. Also, we had two rate hikes this year. As soon as they approved the rate hikes, we seen the increase the next month, which is not fair. The email also said from TECO that if they do lower our rate hikes, if the PSC approves it, we will see the decrease as early as 2024. I just come to you to ask you, to beg you, as a resident of Hillsborough County, I have talked to over hundreds of people about rate hikes that is affecting our community, that is affecting us all. Please bring federal energy efficiency dollars into our county. With this grant, it can help lower the energy burden that we experience in the community, and the community wants to let go of the dirty fossil fuels. Please, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Panton. Brittany Silveira, and Juan Palas Saldana, and Adrian Reyes Alzadi. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brittany Silveira. I'm an international student from the Bahamas. And in my short 12 months living in Hillsborough County, I am saddened by the apathetic approach at dealing with the undeniable issue that is climate change. More specifically, the soaring energy burden rooted in our reliance on dirty energy that has become an ever-present concern for countless of families in Hillsborough County. I am here for the same reason as all of these people behind me, but my story is a little bit different. I am fortunate to have grown up in a place where people vacation, the Bahamas, but also a place where the harsh reality of the climate crisis impacts life every single day. I have seen the coast of my small island recede beyond repair, and the corals that once mined the sea become bleached and barren, much like is happening in South Florida right now. I believe communities like mine are a prime example of the tragedy of the commons, burdened by the actions of global superpowers with minimal authority to make a difference. My home has taught me what injustice looks like, and that's why I'm here today. I say this to say that you all have the power to create a positive ripple effect of change, because your actions don't just impact Hillsborough County. They impact the highly interconnected well-being of socioeconomic achievements for all of our neighboring countries. I am pleased to learn that you are currently in the process of allocating the $831,000 provided to the Department of Energy's Efficiency and Conservation Grant. However, is what you choose to do with those funds that matters most. The time for a piecemeal approach is long past. It's time for a definitive action and a comprehensive plan. Commissioners, I urge you to follow in the footsteps of the City of Tampa's Climate Action Equity Plan and bring federal energy efficiency dollars into our county to help launch a thorough plan that lowers our energy burden and lowers our bills. Thank you.
Thank you. And Juan Palas Saldana, followed by Adrian Reyes Alzadi, and then Ruth Beltran. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I am Munaseiri, or Juan Palas Saldana, by the way I pronounce my name, you can probably tell I'm not a resident of here, but I'm a student of economics, and I come here to ask for a creative and efficient approach for the environment. I understand the hardships that this ask may bring, yet I also know economics tells us that the biggest externality is climate change, where the many pay a single entity's cost. I have no power to vote, I am but a single voice, and yet I come here to speak. I come here not as a citizen of this country, but as an inhabitant of this beautiful land, a land where I see omens of destruction, signs of a storm yet to come. In this age, electric power dictates our potential, and without electricity, society just collapses. Yet the way energy is handled has prioritized profit over well-being, selling the future for a dollar. I do not demand anything, and I do not come here to fight. I'm just a resident of this land, wishing to live here for many more years. I know there are many other difficult matters at hand, but that is precisely why I'm asking to ensure we keep this in mind, to undertake action, for this is not a matter that affects the few, but the all of us, especially those who most need it. I ask to most aggressively research for new energies, to invest in new ways to sustain ourselves. I ask not a plan relying on fossil fuels, for the world's future becomes poisoned when the fossil fuels are there. I do not ask for a sudden change in action for the impossible, for real work, for not symptomatic action, but for treatment. I am but a single voice, and yet I ask for this, because no matter how many voices speak at once, only one is needed to break the silence. I am Munaseiri, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Adrian Reyes Alzadi, and then Ruth Beltran, Abby, I'm not going to pronounce your last name, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Adrian Reyes. I'm here with GenClio, and I'm a USF student. I'm here to talk about the fossil fuel energy burden and soaring energy bills that I see disproportionately affecting the lowest-income families here in our county. As you well know, energy bills have risen 62% over the last four years. What's more, Florida's utilities are at the back of the pack in offering energy efficiency programs. American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy's 2023 Utility Energy Efficiency Scorecard ranked the state's three investor-owned companies, TECO, Duke Energy, and FPL, at 40th, 46th, and 52nd out of 53 largest utilities nationwide. In terms of program performance and savings, as you also most likely know, the wages of the lower and middle-class residents that it's your job to represent have not risen 62%, like their energy bill. Since you're not representing their interests, here we are, here I am, a 19-year-old missing work so that I can show empathy to my neighbors in this county. You all bowed your head before God, making your prayers this morning. Some of you even prayed. So I'm going to remind you of some scripture that's in the New Testament. Mark 1231 reads, "Love your neighbor as yourself; there is no commandment greater than these." It's one of my favorite verses, and I hope it's yours, too. Not to oversimplify, but I couldn't find a more perfect verse for this moment if I wanted to. Love your neighbor. We call on you to bring federal energy efficiency dollars into Hillsborough County and launch a comprehensive plan to lower our energy demand and our bills while we transition off dirty fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ruth Beltran, and then Abby, I'm not going to pronounce your name, and then Z. Smith.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ruth Beltran, and I am a community organizer with the PSL, the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I am here on behalf of several residents who could not take off work or school to be here today. The county must act now to bring federal dollars into Hillsborough County and to create a valuable plan in how these funds will be used. Those funds, once received, the county must use those to directly alleviate the energy burden of our families. Please do not use these funds to put solar panels on a county building. That is not an immediate need of our communities. The need right now is for electricity. Working-class families are being crushed with skyrocketing energy costs, in addition to rent, groceries, and other essential items. Student loans, let's not forget, student loan payments just resumed, which is going to take another chunk out of people's pockets. Evictions have also skyrocketed. Climate change is another concern with the repeated hurricanes that are impacting the state of Florida. Temperatures are also rising above 100 degrees. People must turn on their AC. Electoral officials at all levels have the responsibility to put human lives before profit and should do everything that they can to alleviate energy costs for the people in Hillsborough County and to combat climate change by increasing energy efficiency. The fact that we even have to apply for these funds, it's already outrageous. If the money is there, it should right away be allocated to meet the needs of our communities. I'd also like to remind you the fact that TECO, which is the energy company here, has received approval from the governor to recoup $131 million in hurricane expenses from 2022. They are recouping this money from the people. Everyone's bills was increased so that TECO is able to recoup this money. But this is criminal, because in the year, just last year in 2022, TECO made a record revenue of $3.17 billion. FPL made $3.7 billion. And they are stealing this, $131 million is basically stealing the funds from the pockets of working-class people. So please, I want to plead with you to please take a stand, please use these funds correctly, do not misuse them, and give them to the people that so desperately need it, that are desperate, that cannot make ends meet. That's where these funds can go, and I really hope that you fight to obtain some of the funds that have been rejected, the $326 million that have been rejected by our governor. Please find a way to get some of those funds into the hands of the people in this county. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Last three speakers, or is there Abby here, and then a Z. Smith, and a Jeffrey Dorian. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Abby Schnicker. I work for Florida Student Power Network, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of all students at USF, HCC, and U-Tampa. Like everyone behind me, I'm here to demand that we use over $831,000 in federal funds allocated for efficient energy for Hillsborough County. As students, we love living here in Tampa, but our skyrocketing utility rates are unacceptable and a huge financial burden on our most vulnerable communities. For us, the energy burden becomes a higher rent that we have no choice but to pay while our wages stay the same. I have friends who have come close to being evicted while working multiple jobs and pursuing a degree, and energy burners are a huge part of their rent. It's never been more clear that we need energy efficiency right now. I stand before you today humbly asking to urge you to side with your constituents in Hillsborough County and our concerns. We ask that you bring federal energy efficiency dollars into Hillsborough County and launch a comprehensive plan to lower our energy demand and our bills while we transition off these dirty fossil fuels. Please help us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Z. Smith, and the final speaker is Jeffrey Dorian, which is virtual. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Z. Smith. I'm here to bring to your attention my concerns about the use of the pesticide Dybrom to fog the county by airplane. This pesticide is going everywhere. I understand that mosquitoes are difficult to live with, but do we have any data that reflects a mosquito problem or a disease-causing bacteria problem from mosquitoes? Do we know enough about Dybrom? Does it kill bees, birds, or any other wildlife? Does Dybrom cause cancer or other medical conditions in humans like the pesticide, DDT, and other pesticides have been found to cause? Does Dybrom get into our waterways and contaminate the fish that we eat or the water that we drink? A lot of us are growing crops in our homes. How do we remove Dybrom safely from our foods? My neighbor sells eggs from her chicken coop. How does Dybrom affect the health of her chicken and the eggs that we all eat? How long has our county been fogging? What are the additive effects of these chemicals to humans and wildlife? I know these are tough questions, but we have a large population of people with history of cancer and other diseases. We need to know whether our elected officials or unelected officials understand human biochemistry and the impact of chemicals in the environment. I use vinegar with citrus oil to spray inside and outside of my house, and it works really well. And maybe vinegar is not a long-term solution, but as leaders of our communities, it is our responsibility to make sure that public policy is not damaging our biology. We work hard all of our lives. We can't be cutting our lives short because we didn't do the research. Thank you very much for helping facilitate the responsible use of chemicals in our county. And please do not raise taxes. We need our money to help strengthen our immune system to be able to counteract toxins.
Thank you for your comments. Last speaker is Jeffrey Dorian, which is virtual.
Morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jeff Dorian. I live in Orlando and also lead Tampa's Citizens Climate Lobby, the chapter, with over 700 members on our mailing list. I'm calling today about the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant. We are asking the Commission to determine the best application of the grants, over $800,000 coming to the county. This is an opportunity to reduce the public's energy burden where it's most needed and improve energy efficiency that has been proved to be the most cost-effective approach. Reducing electric consumption isn't in the utilities' best interest, so we depend on you to represent the public interest. I'm a member of Orlando's Energy Efficiency and Green Building Citizens Subcommittee. We are helping decide how best to apply the funds from this grant, along with guidance from county staff. We urge you to consider forming such a committee. A first step in forming a citizens committee might be to hire an experienced sustainability and energy director to lead it. The Commission and county residents will benefit from the best decisions on conflicting energy efficiency choices. It'd be unfortunate to miss the substantial benefits of this grant to reduce residents' energy burden. A sustainability energy director could also lead efforts to apply for the many other grants coming from recently passed landmark National Clean Energy Loss. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Commissioner Kemp, you want to make a comment?
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for coming down this morning and standing up for the community and standing up for an end to fossil fuels and a better energy situation for Hillsborough County, state of Florida. I will do what I can in this regards. I just, the testimony was incredible, and having grown up Catholic, the whole "love your neighbor as yourself," I mean, that was something that I was very much trained to do, and I think that you all have shown that this morning with your testimony. But with regards to it, I'm going to ask George Cassidy to please meet with Brooke Ward and, you know, see what we can determine about the grant. You know, some of these grants are narrow in what you can apply for and narrow with what would be accepted, and it may just, you know, be limits on that. But I do appreciate the testimony and looking at what the county can do about this. I've been about that for a lot of years, and I've been also pushing the county in whatever facilities they have in terms of doing that to save taxpayer dollars in the future as operating costs and to improve our climate. So I think there are opportunities there. I will be asking in the future items, but that comes at the end of the meeting, to do a future item with regards to this, looking at this. I did also read the same articles you did about the governor turning back $346 million in energy efficiency that the state of Florida citizens could have used, that other states are getting. I don't know if there's any power we have to speak to that or ask about that or reflect on that, but I'll also look into that. So I appreciate all of you coming down. It's a serious need and, you know, something that we should be moving on, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve consent. Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, first public hearing.
Thank you. The first public hearing is Item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing regarding the emergency medical transportation entities. This is to conduct a public hearing regarding the emergency medical transportation entities. And Jennifer Mott from the County Attorney's Office will take us through the site.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Mott, and I am with the County Attorney's Office. I have with me, can you hear me? I have with me Deputy Chief of Administration Jason Doherty. And just by way of background, on March 1st, during our BOCC hearing, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Chief Jones presented the board with a report concerning the advanced life services and basic life services, which are known as ALS and BLS provisions within the county. And he explained that there has been a concerning trend of expensive ALS resources being used on BLS services. His findings were supported by a consultant report, which was prepared by Fission Associates, and he discussed those in more detail with the board. And notably, he explained that there were some recommendations in that report for amending the ordinance in ways that would increase the availability of BLS services to governmental agencies. Those recommendations were, one, to provide for additional definitions; two, provide for modifications to classes of service; three, provide for additional regulations for government service providers; and four, to change the COPCN certification renewal period. The board directed the County Attorney's Office to provide the necessary updates to the ordinance, and I worked with Chief Jones to work on a draft ordinance amendment that would be consistent with those recommendations, as well as with other jurisdictions that are facing these same issues. The draft was presented to the EMPC during a meeting on August, and the chief asked if anyone had any comments or objections. None were received. And Deputy Chief Administration, Jason Doherty and I are here for you, if you have any questions. All legal and advertising requirements have been met, and this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Chief, you want to add anything here?
The, I'll just say that Commissioner Cohen and the board made a request with three different items. This is number two of the three items. The first one was to present the master plan, which we've already done earlier this year. And the last part of that three-part request was a BLS RFP, which is with the procurement right now, and will be probably presenting, presenting that to you next month. And lastly, I just want to thank you for your continued support with the fire rescue and the citizens of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On this public hearing, would anyone like to speak to this item? If not, close the public hearing. Commissioner Owen?
Yes, I just wanted to thank staff and for working so closely with our heroes here. So I think that this should be a 7-0 vote, so I won't waste any time on it and move for approval. Thanks.
Got a motion approved. Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Cohen. If no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd be remiss, I just wanted to thank Ms. Mott and her team for an excellent job, and thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, D2.
Thank you. The next public hearing, this is to conduct a public hearing regarding the changes to the apprenticeship program that the board had requested. Kathryn Benson with the County Attorney's Office is here to present this item, as well as Scott Stromer is here, if you have any particular questions regarding procurement.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathryn Benson, Assistant County Attorney, County Attorney's Office. This proposed ordinance amends Division 4 of Article 6 of Chapter 2 of the Hillsborough County Code, eliminating apprentice participation requirements for county construction contracts as directed by the board. And instead, it provides an incentive for using apprentices in county construction project, contracts of at least $5 million. Specifically, a contractor could receive up to 30% of the amount it expends on apprentice costs, up to $100,000 for contracts up to $20 million, and up to $200,000 for contracts over $20 million. This public hearing was noticed in accordance with applicable law. Scott Stromer, Director of Procurement Services, is here if you have any questions, as am I. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item? Now, can we have a motion to, okay, Commissioner Owen?
Yes, just wanted to thank staff again for their work on, on the amendment to this ordinance. I think it's going to have really a positive reflection on the apprenticeship program as well, because it's going to provide that incentive and take away that liquidated, liquidated damage provision. So I'll move for approval. Thanks.
Okay, motion to approve. Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. If no comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
D3.
Thank you. D3 is the next public hearing. This to make changes to our code of silence program. And Sasha Brown Taylor from the County Attorney's Office is here to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sasha Brown Taylor, the Senior Assistant County Attorney with the County Attorney's Office. This is a public hearing to consider amending Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances and Laws, Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 3, Section 2-574, which is the code of silence, as it relates to competitive procurements by the county. This amendment will remove the code of silence for sole source procurements. It will revise the timeframe within which the code of silence is applicable, so that it ends the earlier of five business days after the county posts its notice of intent to award a procurement contract, or the date the procurement is canceled by the county. And this amendment will also revise the county staff that bidders and interested parties are permitted to communicate with without violating the code of silence. At the August 2nd, 2023, regular board meeting, after the presentation of a staff report to the board regarding Commissioner Winstall's proposed modifications to certain procurement processes, including the code of silence, the board directed the County Attorney's Office to work with the Procurement Services Department to amend the code of silence provision contained in the county's protest ordinance. This public hearing was properly, was properly advertised, and all the legal requirements we noticed has been met. I'm here to answer any questions, as is Scott Stromer, the Director of Procurement Services.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? All right, close the public hearing. Can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Winstall. If no comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
D4.
Thank you. The next public hearing is a public hearing regarding the, the community investment tax and the addition of three new projects. And I'm sorry, that's D5. I'm jumping ahead. We're going to go to D4. This is a public hearing regarding the Brownfield Project, and Derek Shaver with Economic Development is here to present this item. My apologies.
Good morning, Commissioners. Derek Shaver, Hillsborough County's Economic Development Department. This is the first of the scheduled public hearings for the designation of a Brownfield area at 4810 South 50th Street in Tampa. We are requesting that this public hearing be deferred and continued. On May 12, 2023, 4810 Property LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel at 4810 South 50th Street, Tampa, as a Brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 3.11 acres and is shown on the projected map. An advertised community meeting on this designation was held at the Emmanuel P. Johnson Recreation Center near the site on August 28th, but no public comment was received. The community meeting was held as Hurricane Idalia was approaching the west coast of Florida and after an evacuation order had been issued for Flood Zone A within Hillsborough County. As a subject, as the subject property, the surrounding community, and the facility holding the community meeting are located in the evacuation zone A, staff is recommending that another community, community meeting be scheduled. Staff is also recommending deferring and continuing this first public hearing and rescheduling the second public hearing to comply with Florida statutes, so that the public hearings are held after the community meeting. The new proposed community meeting would be scheduled for Monday, October 9th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Emmanuel P. Johnson Rec Center, located at 5855 South 78th Street, Tampa, 33619. The public hearing scheduled for today would be deferred to and continued until November 1st, 2023, at 10:00 AM, and the second proposed public hearing would be scheduled for November 15th, 2023, at 10:00 AM during the regular board meeting. In order to expedite this process, staff is recommending a waiver of the statutory requirement that one of the public hearings before the Board of County Commissioners be held after 5:00 PM. The advertised community meeting near the site will be held at 6:00 PM, and a verbatim transcript of the community meeting will be provided to the board prior, prior to the board's consideration of final approval of the designation. This action is compliance with Section 125.66 of the Florida statutes requiring a majority plus one vote. New signs will be placed at the same locations near the site, and new ads will be placed in the same publications, the Florida Sentinel, La Gaceta, and the Tampa Bay Times. I, Vivian Arnez, battle with the County Attorney's Office, and the applicant are available for any questions.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Okay.
Move to continue to November 1st.
I will continue to November 1st for the second required public hearing. Any other action need to be taken, or is that?
Point of word, they're asking for a waiver, I thought, too, as well. Do we have to?
It's included in the whole motion.
Okay. Okay, so then a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. If no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
D5.
Now on to D5, and that's CIT public hearing to, for the addition of three community investment projects. And Kevin Bricky with Management and Budget is here to present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Director of Management and Budget. D5 is to hold a public hearing as noticed to receive public input and discuss modifying the approved list of projects for Phase 4 of the CIT, and to adopt a CIT Phase 4 resolution, adding those three new projects. A new project, Progress Village South Fire Station, a sheriff training facility, which will also serve PSOC emergency operations uses, and to add to the approved list the Natazzasa Fire Station Number 21 replacement fire station. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you, Kevin. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Ms. Lillyquist?
Good morning, County Commission. I wanted to applaud the young people that were here earlier. They are our future leaders, and they did a great job. I think I signed up in the wrong area, but it works for what I need to say. I think part of that community investment tax has to be to build a homeless shelter for these homeless. One of our shelters in Brandon that actually feeds the homeless has shut down because they are just over it. We need more county involvement and restructuring what's going on with the homeless in Hillsborough County. I wanted to just touch lightly on that. In regards to the community investment tax, a portion, a portion should go to creating a homeless complex on county-owned property. At least 15 acres is needed. On August 10th, 23rd, I participated in a virtual call with the Planning Department. The property at Mill Road and Valrico Road in Brandon, this is where our homeless, there's a lot of them. I was not allowed to make a rebuttal statement due to the attorney's request for approval. I was taken aback by the rudeness of this attorney expressed, that she expressed toward the citizen that spoke, as well as to you, the county commissioners, with direct threats for, toward you, for the county commission, along with bullying you to approve without exception, with the exception of two board members that voted against this. I feel this behavior should have been noted and reprimanded, and it was not. Unfortunately, that was on August 10th. Unfortunately, one week later, a homeless woman was hit by a car and killed at Parsons and 60. Two weeks later, a woman was hit and killed at St. Cloud and 60, a half mile from this area that you guys just approved, for 175 townhomes. Now, for some good news Kathy Castor has heard, as you've heard, we've been cutting down the oak trees and the oak tree canopies, and relief is on the way. In three to six months, Tampa will begin planting those oak trees. If we're really smart, we could protect the oak tree canopy in Brandon at the corner of Blumstead and Parsons forever. If the homeless complex could be created and built, we could use the apprentice program within Hillsborough County to recruit the homeless to plant these trees and save a significant amount of money, and give them jobs and get them off the streets and out of the, out of the prison system, because they're a combination of people. We need to do something about this. And it would also give them jobs in the process. I appreciate what you guys do. I've been watching the budget hearings. I know that you guys are going through a lot of strenuous tasks right now. The community investment tax is a part of our community, but it's also part of the future, and we have to address the homeless issues. And I hope that you guys can set aside 15 acres of land. It was called Hillsborough Cares back in 2010 that we tried to do with Catholic charities. We could revisit that with land between Falkenburg and Orient, because we need to get the Sheriff's Department involved. We need to correct these situations now. We don't need more deaths on the highways, because we don't have the 500 million that is held up on transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak to this item? If not, can we have a motion?
Move for approval, D5.
Motion approved. Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item E1. This is 1015. This is a special appearance by Eric Hart of the Tampa Sports Authority regarding the feasibility of an indoor fieldhouse facility. And Rob Higgins of the, the Executive Director of the Tampa Baseball Sports Commission, regarding a outdoors tournament complex for baseball, softball. Commissioner Hagan, I believe you had a few words you wanted to say before this item, as I come to the podium.
Yes, board members, before we hear the presentations, I'd like to just provide some context and history to how we got here. It was exactly 11 years ago, actually, next month, October of 2012, was when I gave a presentation to this board on the benefits associated with multi-sport complexes. I specifically outlined three facilities, an outdoor complex, an indoor gym or fieldhouse, and then a baseball, softball complex, at which time I highlighted the benefits associated with these types of facilities, notably the economic and sports tourism benefits. Now, as a former college baseball player with kids who, one played baseball and another that's currently playing softball, baseball, softball was my priority. But in consultation with Rob Higgins and the Sports Commission, they advised that our biggest need at that time was for an outdoor complex that could host soccer, football, rugby, lacrosse, in addition to other sports. So for several years, that was the direction that I followed in, in championing the tournament sports complex and ultimately winning board approval for the funding. I stated in 2012, and I'll say it again today, that these facilities are a revenue generator through visitor spending, room nights, and tourist taxes that are collected. Now, back in 2012, I made that statement because that's what the expert said. Well, I'm here to tell you in 2023, I know this is the case, because my daughter plays travel softball, and having attended an average of 15 to 20 tournaments a year, I feel it in the pocketbook. So I can tell you with certainty that this is the case. But just to show or indicate just how successful the tournament sports complex has been, we're in year five, and it has shattered all of our projections. Last year, there were 47 events, nine of which had international competitors. It generated over 68,000 room nights, and if my numbers are correct, it's 10.5 million in spending. Simply put, from an operational standpoint, this complex pays for itself. With the exception of Raymond James Stadium this year, thanks to TSA hosting so many concerts, it is the only county facility that pays for itself. So with that brief introduction, I'll have, I don't know who's going to go first. Is it Eric or Rob?
It's Eric.
Okay, we're going to hear from Eric and Rob Higgins, and then I'm going to, when they're finished, I'm going to make a couple other comments. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for having us up here today. You know, as, as Commissioner Hagan indicated, the sports complex has been a huge success for both Rob and I, and many of you know the partnership that we have as we run that complex. In 2010, we did do an additional report, and at that time, the county had decided that the outdoor complex, but we went ahead and went back as part of our strategic plan and looked at the indoor complex that was also proposed at that time. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our consultant, Susie Seeger. She's coming up, and she'll give you a presentation on what we believe an additional indoor complex would do for the community.
Good morning. Thanks, Eric. As Eric mentioned, my name is Susan Seeger, and I'm President and CEO of Crossroads Consulting. We're based in St. Petersburg, and we specialize in development planning and business advisory services for public and private sector clients on any type of public assembly facility. So whether that be sports complexes, stadiums, arenas, convention centers, amphitheaters. We're pleased today, to be with you today to go through the high-level results of our update for the indoor sports facility. If I can make this work. There we go. We really wanted to answer some key questions, right? Because it's been a while since that, since that study. So does demand still exist? If so, what building program elements help us optimize sports tourism? If so, what building program elements help us optimize sports tourism? Are there sites in the county that are capable of accommodating this facility? What's the usage, the room night generation? And what are the potential economics associated with the project, both from a capital perspective as well as an ongoing operational perspective? So up here is a graph of the work we did, but predominantly looking at the local market conditions, sports trends, getting impact from, getting input from users who are making decisions where to bring events, and all of that yielding a building program, a cost estimate, an estimate of financials, and an estimate of direct spending and tax revenues. The market assessment is really key, right? Because it's driving program and it's driving demand. There was strong market, there was strong market demand for this concept, just as there was back in two thousand and twelve. Why? Strengths and opportunities. You're an established reputation as a destination, both a business, a leisure, but a sports destination. You've proven that you can host large-scale events on a regular basis. The amenities you have in terms of hotels, restaurants, bars, retail, and attractions. People that attend these events, as you mentioned, when you're taking your children, they really are looking for the full package, and Hillsborough County offers that. Transportation access is strong, both vehicular and air access. As I mentioned, strong market demand by those that are deciding where to bring events. You have the opportunity to increase sports tourism and also to retain some of that spending in the county that's now leaving because there isn't the appropriate facilities to host that. One thing is, we can also balance it with local programming as well as sports tourism to try and activate it seven days a week. There is also the potential for public-private partnerships in these types of buildings. Some of the challenges, the competition from existing indoor sports facilities, both in the region but also throughout the country. This is a hot commodity. A lot of communities are looking at the same thing that you are because of the economic benefits that they generate. Many experience an operating loss, and funding for construction operations is obviously a challenge when looking at these. What are we looking at in terms of building program? That has definitely shifted a little bit from the last study, particularly given the increase in competition. We're still looking at twelve tournament-quality basketball courts. That can be convertible to twenty-four volleyball courts, thirty-six or forty-eight pickleball and badminton courts. We want to do match sports, gymnastics, any type of event, we want to be able to do that. So we really want a flexible design that can accommodate not only multiple events but simultaneous events. We also want to make sure that we have the appropriate support areas, team gathering spaces, lobby concessions, merchandise, to make sure that we're activating while there's events in the building. We want to be multipurpose, so we can do banquets, we can do expos, other community events. One thing that has definitely come to the forefront is that Wi-Fi has to be robust. We have to have streaming. That was a want last time. It's an absolute need. We want to make sure we have enough parking and ancillary space to have commercial leases or potential tenant to help offset some of that operating costs. What are we talking at for an order of magnitude cost estimate? It's about sixty-nine point five million dollars, which, as everyone knows, has certainly been an increase over the last several years in all capital projects. One of the other questions is, can this fit? So Tampa Sports Authority provided different sites throughout the county, West Chase, East Tampa, near the sports plaques, North Tampa, and West Shore. All of the sites that were identified to us can accommodate the building program. The sites in West Chase and East Tampa are particularly favorable when we look at the adjacent land uses, when we look at the vehicular access and the proximity to those amenities and the development cost. Annual usage. These are very busy buildings, and we're looking at the five-year projection, but we want to focus on the stabilized year. There's obviously a ramp up to that. And so we're looking at about thirty-eight events, and these are sports tourism-oriented events, whether they're state regional tournaments or national tournaments across the board in terms of sports. So that's about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand attendee days. So it could be one person attending multiple days over a three-day tournament. So a lot of activity. Also important is the room night generation. We're looking at forty-four thousand net new hotel room nights each year. As I mentioned previously, while this is really focused on sports tourism, there is definitely an opportunity to host other events, conferences, expos, community events. On the financial pro forma, if we just focus on the high level, brings in about a million, a million point one in operating revenues, and the expenses are about one point two. So there's a little bit of a deficit somewhere around one fifty to two fifty each year. There are other revenue sources, however, that can help mitigate that. Other facilities are very aggressive in terms of sponsorship, advertising, naming rights. So that's an opportunity. And also, as I mentioned, you can potentially have a tenant that pays rent that's there full-time. These are developed because of the predominant economic benefits that they can generate. And if you look at these three graphs, the first one on the left is really the direct spending in Hillsborough County on an annual basis, again focusing on that year three to five, which is a stabilized. It's significant benefit. So when we're talking about direct spending, we're talking about people staying in your hotels, eating in your restaurant, shopping at your malls, and that's about twenty-five million dollars net new each and every year. We look at the county tax revenues. We're looking at the tourist development tax and the local discretionary sales surtax. It's about eight hundred thousand on an annual basis in a stabilized year. And the last graph looks at the state tax revenues from the six percent sales and use tax, and that's right around one point four million dollars annually. And with that, that is a high-level summary of our study process.
Thank you. Next up?
He's getting this set. I'll just go ahead and make a quick, a couple of quick opening comments. Thanks so much for your continued support of sports tourism. Tell you, the vision that this group has had for sports tourism over the years has been tremendous, and Commissioner Higgins touched on the success of the sports complex. Over that first five-year run, when it came to the feasibility study, it predicted it would have right around a hundred and fifty thousand hotel visitor room nights, and we're confident at the end of year five, it's going to be over two hundred thousand hotel visitor room nights, and it wouldn't be possible without your continued support. I do just want to make sure that everybody has clarity in terms of the overall relationship with the Tampa Sports Authority and then the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, which is who we are. The Tampa Sports Authority manages the sports complex as well as Raymond James Stadium, three municipal golf courses, and does a fantastic job. The Sports Commission is responsible for marketing our community's facilities and help driving tourism from that standpoint. When we first started, there was a hundred sports commissions around the country. Now there's over six hundred and fifty. Communities see the return on investment when it comes to this. So without further ado, I'd love to introduce you to Dan Morton. Dan is with the Sports Facilities Companies. They actually did the study when it came to the sports complex several years ago and have now done the study related to this potential baseball, softball facility. So here's Dan.
Thanks, Rob. Morning. My name's Dan Morton. I'm Vice President of Pre-Development Services with Sports Facilities Companies. We're headquartered in Clearwater, Florida. I'll give you a little more information about us. But I'm going to go through this information pretty quickly. A lot of numbers, a lot of data behind it. Happy to answer questions afterwards. I'm going to talk through who we are, what we do around the country, the process we've gone through to study a new potential outdoor field facility here, and then I'll get into the details of that facility. What are the recommendations in terms of the facility, number of fields, support spaces? What is the potential cost of those facilities based on comparable projects? And then we'll get into performance, both operational, from a revenue and expense perspective, and then impact, right? Room night generation and potential tax generation. And then we'll just wrap up with some next steps. Terms of Sports Facilities Companies, this is just a sample map of facilities that we manage. We get involved at every step of the way in development of youth and amateur sport, entertainment, event-type facilities. We get involved in pre-development on the study side. As you heard, we did the study for the sports complex, which is great to hear some of the results that are happening there. We also get involved in development, and we manage facilities. So the only thing I'll highlight there is just that everything we do is based on what we know to be true, and that can be achieved through either operations that we manage or ones that we have relationships with around the country. Terms of the process, pretty standard feasibility process, but for us, the focus is first defining success. What does success look like for a new development or a potential new development here? That's different. Every community we go to, every organization is different. So we worked with Rob and team to define success. Overarching, I think it's clear here, the goal is to drive new room nights, new visitation through a sports tourism development here that is impactful and competitive within the regional landscape. So once we define that success, we look at a lot of different market factors. I won't go through everything, but making sure that this facility can be competitive within the region where you've got a lot of communities who have already invested, who are looking to invest in this type of complex. So we look on a local, subregional, and regional level what the competitive landscape is and what we believe can be drawn to this facility of existing events, new events, and people from around the country. We also talk to stakeholders, right? So one thing to look at a lot of data, it's really important, but we've worked with Rob and team to talk to a lot of the stakeholders who are either hosting in this region, have wanted to host here but can't because the facilities don't exist, or are within our network that we know are interested that way. So we've talked to a lot of those tournament organizers, those folks that would bring those events to this community to really gauge and understand what that demand could be. From a recommended perspective, we have two different options, two models. The reality here is there's, we're looking at an ideal facility, but there is opportunity to develop facilities that are, you know, have some value engineering and still achieve some of the success. But first model we're looking at is really, what is ideal? What is the best facility that focuses on outdoor diamond baseball, softball events that could drive tourism to this community and be competitive to set you up for years to come? Not just five years, but ten to twenty years down the road, making sure it remains competitive. And so as you can see here on the screen or on your screens, we've recommended a total of twelve full-size flexible diamond fields. These fields have the ability to accommodate every age group from a diamond field sport perspective, baseball, softball, and then they can also be convertible to multipurpose fields, which allows there to be potential with overflow with the current facility existing. So that's twelve full-size fields. There's a championship field setting, so we've got the ability to do some spectators, and then support spaces. Really important to these types of facilities is creating a great experience. And so food and beverage support, restrooms, shade structures, all those things are built into here, and a recommendation for about one thousand three hundred and twenty parking spaces. This full-size facility would take about seventy-seven acres. We looked at a second option as well that has a little bit more of a pulled back and value engineered in terms of number of fields. We've reduced some of the great amenities like spectator seating that are a little more of a luxury than a pure driver of economic impact. And so that is, again, twelve additional fields, but we reduced some of the ability to do flexible fields. This is less full-size baseball, softball fields. There are six of those, and then six additional flex fields. So again, still twelve fields, but a little bit smaller. It will reduce some of that opportunity, but we still think could be a great destination within this community. And then everything you would expect from a support space as well. So you can just see a brief summary of those two options. First option is twelve four-hundred-foot full-size flex fields. That allows us to get to an inventory of twenty-four youth and baseball, youth and softball fields, which would be unmatched. It is unmatched in this region. You can see from an acreage perspective, very similar in the seventy to seventy-seven acres perspective. And from a cost perspective, we're talking for the large first model, about fifty-four million dollars for the smaller option, about forty-seven and a half million. So as you can see, right, significant investment required. The really important piece there is that if we start to talk about smaller facilities, it reduces the ability for a new facility to be competitive, both now and in the future. And so based on what we see in the market, the competitive landscape, and what we've heard from stakeholders, we think it's important to achieve that twelve-field total model with flexibility in order to set yourselves up for success to compete now and in the future. So just wanted to highlight that as well. Last thing I'll say from a site perspective is that we did do this site agnostic, so we're not looking at a specific site. Obviously, seventy to eighty acres is a big piece of land, and so that'll be an important next step is to understand, once now we know how a facility would perform, we'd have to consider where it could go. And so as long as you check the box of being in proximity to the airport and to infrastructure like hotels, restaurants, et cetera, we could make sites work, but just wanted to make sure we highlighted that as well. From a performance perspective, again, lots of numbers. I'll just do a really quick summary of that. We've analyzed the revenue opportunities, both primary hosting events and secondary things like food and beverage, sponsorship and advertising, retail, et cetera. This doesn't include any assumption for naming rights or any of those things. We are conservative by nature to say, this is what we would expect to happen if you develop this facility. There are certainly upside opportunities here. You can see each model, we've built out a full pro forma, five-year projection for revenue, cost of goods sold, and operating expenses. The key here is this is a standalone operation. This doesn't rely on your current inventory structure, your current folks that are, you know, maintaining tournament sports complex. There certainly could be efficiencies to be had, but we want to look at this facility as a standalone. So as you can see, both models will require an operational subsidy as currently structured. That's the reality of most sports tourism destinations like this around the country. We are overbuilding in order to drive that tournament play. You can see a little bit better performance in year five on the first option. It's because we have more flexibility, more opportunity to drive some revenue, but we're, you know, in year five for the second model at about a subsidy of about a half million dollars at maturity. From an economic impact perspective, you can see the direct spend numbers, about thirty-three million dollars a year at maturity in the first option, about twenty-five point seven million dollars a year. In the second option, importantly for you all, from a room night generation perspective, getting to about fifty-five thousand new room nights on an annual basis through the larger model. That would translate into just under about a million dollars in new hotel tax revenue. You can see the cost to build summary there as well. So overwhelmingly, as you know, with the tournament sports complex, as you heard from the indoor, these projects are investments both into infrastructure and operations to potentially generate the economic impact. We think there's a really great opportunity here to build on what you currently, what you have done and what you have in terms of a destination. We've vetted that through our network in the industry as well as our expertise and management, believe if this facility is invested in, you can achieve what we forecasted here. So in terms of next steps, right, obviously looking from a site perspective and funding, don't need to tell you that, but appreciate you guys giving us the time to present to you and happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, sir. You guys got anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for keeping it, for keeping it brief. I've got a few comments I'm going to make, and then I'm going to make a motion. We'll open up with any board comments. The purpose of these studies, you know, was to confirm the viability of both facilities in Hillsborough County. As we heard and the reports confirm, our market is so strong that even with increased competing facilities, our market strength and opportunities present a real opportunity for the county to consider these facilities. We heard things such as, you know, our established reputation as a destination, our strong market demand, all the existing amenities we have as far as hotels, restaurants, bars, attractions, and we have a real opportunity to increase sports tourism-related room nights and economic activities. I mean, I can go on and on about all the benefits these facilities provide, but the reality is, they are not cheap to construct. Up until Monday, I had told Bonnie and staff that the CIT was the only possible funding source that we can consider, and that's only if a reauthorization occurs. Well, that was about, that was until about eight AM Monday morning, when the Rays had a little announcement that they made. Tourist taxes were a primary funding source for a possible Rays ballpark. So by the Rays electing to remain in St. Pete, this frees up those dollars to potentially consider using toward one of these facilities. I do want to remind the board members that tourist tax dollars are the funding source we use for Raymond James Stadium and Amalie Arena improvements, in addition to Steinbrenner Field as well. And we will need that funding source for future renovations. So I'm not suggesting that this new capacity is a windfall, but with sports tourism being such a large benefit of these facilities, tourist tax dollars are most certainly a legitimate funding source to consider. We are a long way from this board voting to construct and fund one of these facilities. As with the tournament sports complex, these studies are the first of many, many steps over several years. However, based on these reports, I would like for the board to continue to receive additional information that will help us make an informed decision on, number one, whether to consider a facility, and if so, indoor or baseball, softball, because they both fill different needs. And then obviously, what options exist on potential locations. So for the purpose of today, I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice chair and just make a motion to receive the report, but also to ask staff to review the reports and get with the consultants, and then to evaluate specific potential locations for both facilities. Obviously, with the indoor complex, they focused on, or they considered certain areas. Baseball, softball, they didn't. So I'd like for staff just to evaluate potential locations and that would just allow us just to have additional information to consider in the future. So that's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Higgins, second by Commissioner Owens. No one is in the queue? Okay.
I just had a question for the gentleman on the outdoor. Just for the board's purposes, the two options, one that has a championship field facility, what does that look like? Could you just explain real quick the difference between those two, not having that versus having it?
Yeah, sure. And when we say championship field, we're not talking about thirty thousand seats, right? That is in the range of fifteen to three thousand seats. It is a setting to be able to host some championship games for tournaments, to host some championship games for tournaments, to host some other things like, you know, you can do, get into some collegiate events, things like that. And so if you had that in the option, it just opens up with another amenity to be able to, to host some of those other things, a nice guest thing when you've got a championship game. To not have it, you would probably not be able to host some of those events, but a lot of times, those aren't really the most economic impact generating anyway. And so it's a great amenity, great amenity to have, but not required to drive economic impact in the way that we've looked at it.
Yeah. Thanks for clearing that up. And I, I guess I don't consider college youth, but, so the field, the field would be for, let's just say, the 15 and up type of thing. It wouldn't be necessarily a youth little league stadium. I say little league, I use that loosely, because little league's pretty much almost gone in Hillsborough County. But is that what your, what the vision is for that?
Yeah, it's actually flexible. So it can be both. So the fields that we've looked at, and you'll hear it from us all day long, the more flexible you can build your assets, the better you are off both now and in the future. We didn't know what pickleball was gonna be, and now pickleball's everywhere, right? And so just an example of things change. So that stadium facility would be able to, to go little league to softball, all the way up to, you know, adult baseball or, or high school baseball.
Wow, okay. Well, thank you. That's all I had.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. I guess I have, and I understand your strong support for this, Commissioner Hagan, for moving on and all these things, which are things that are, would, would be great desires. But I, I am concerned about the big price tag and the, you know, multi-millions. And even when we heard the best stories there, that they're paying for operations, but not capital and not even, and then it even shows operational deficits. We have talked a lot about the kinds of things that Hillsborough County ha, I feel has to invest in, in the future that we haven't been investing. We've had quite robust investment in the area of sports, I think, in, in all kinds of ways besides our professional teams, as well as the sportsplex. And so I just, I think it's, you know, I'd rather see some of this settle in, and I, I feel like it's, I know it's many, many, many-step process, but I'd rather see the process come back when we have more of a handle on where we're going in terms of infrastructure in the future. So I'll just put that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Wosel?
In your report, I, I almost read all 121 pages. There were some models that showed profitability though, right? It was 40% of them that were operating at a profit. Was, is that correct? I can't remember which one of the two consulting firms had that broke out. It stated that 60% operated at a loss, I believe, and 40% were actually operating at a profit?
Yeah, no, I don't think that was the correct context. I believe it was for the indoor facilities, those that are operated publicly or privately. So they can either be owned publicly or privately and operated publicly or privately. So the majority, irrespective of ownership, were operated privately. I think that's the context, not necessarily how it related to on financial operations.
So then all of them operate at a loss?
No, not all of them do operate at a loss. So we're really talking about two different things. One is just the ownership and operating strategy versus financial operations in terms of profitability or operating deficit. So some of those that were on that particular table, I believe you're referencing, do operate at a profit. So it will, again, you know, this is, as we've mentioned, the first of many steps. So when we kind of continue to hone in towards more business plan strategy, part of that will be what the operating objectives are for yourselves as owners and your operating team. Right now, we've assumed that that's a sports authority, to make sure, if you want to be aggressive about naming rights, for instance, that can help offset that. If you want to be aggressive about having a tenant, that can help offset that. So again, some of that's kind of honing in. But on that particular table, there are several that do actually operate at break even or a profit.
Okay. Yeah, I, I will say, I, I talked to a lot of people that participate in travel sports, and I was stunned at how much money they spend. I mean, I've talked about my humble beginnings, so I didn't know something like that was a, was a thing. I mean, good for them, but um, it is a lot of money. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan?
And just some follow-up comments. First of all, to address what Commissioner Wosel just said, it is a lot of money. We had one tournament over the summer, Myrtle Beach, and I think I estimated, I spent $500 or $600, not counting the rooms or gas, but just on food and entertainment. And that's part of the interesting thing about this is that these models that they show, they are intentionally so. We have asked for them, the models to be extremely conservative by nature. So they show a loss from an operational standpoint from the revenue that's generated at the facility itself, but that's not considering the tourist tax revenue that's, that's generated. Once you consider the tourist tax revenue that's generated, and these models usually is by year two or year three, operationally, it pays for itself. But that's not considering the direct spending. Like the $500 that I said I just spent at that tournament, you know, just do the simple sales tax math, those numbers are not considered anywhere in here. So that's, I can tell you, and Rob and Eric will attest to this, that was intentional to say, let's show very, very conservative numbers, knowing that you're talking about probably a half a million dollars more in sales tax revenue, if you consider the direct spending from going to Outback, going to BFO Brady's, going to the local sports bar. I mean, that's, that's where we live, when you're, when you're on, you're out of town in, in these places. Not to mention going to Myrtle Beach, going to a go-kart facility, I mean, going to putt-putt facility, I mean, just going to different things. So the direct spending is real, and that's not included in here, I guess is really what I want to say. But to just address what Commissioner Kemp said, I do not have rose-colored glasses. In fact, you can tell by these right here, when it comes to here, the price tag is very high. So I'm just suggesting, let's get the additional information. This is a long, long road, and I'm a long way from saying, hey, I'm ready to fund this thing. And I could use a Rays analogy, but I'm not gonna do that right now. So, but that's all the comments I have on that.
Thank you. Saying no other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is item G1. This is our 1030. This is to receive a report regarding human trafficking. This is related to item B5 and E2, which will follow after this. And this is the report that Commissioner Cameron Sepeda asked for at the last board meeting. Carl Harness is here to present this item.
Good morning, Carl.
Good morning, Carl Harness, Chief Human Services Administrator, Mr. Chair, member of the board. I'm, I'm pleased to be here before you today to prevent, to present some information regarding the county's involvement in the human traffic initiatives. And this is in response to Commissioner, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda's request at the September 7th board meeting. As we look back on, on information and things that the county has done over the past decade, we have, we have had significant involvement in human trafficking in numerous, in numerous veins. Whether it's been, whether it's been the county spearheading items, or whether we've been working in collaboration with some of our human, with some of our community partners, there's been a lot of activity. Amongst some of the things that we've been involved with is, you know, developing and implementing educational and training programs for county employees, constitutional officers, and other agencies within our area. Developing and implementing training programs, customized training programs for some of our local business partners. Integration of communication and digital media services with large public awareness campaigns. Mapping out, mapping out and inventorying services in the community, working with our, our private partners and our, and our, and our providers throughout the county. Partnering with the collaborative lab organization over in St. Pete to execute strategic, strategic exercises in, in trying to, in trying to provide organizational problem-solving initiatives. During all the time that we've been involved in this, county staff has participated in numerous local and state-led, state-led meetings on human trafficking. And also, county has been involved in the coordination and staffing on the commission of human trafficking. And let me give you a little bit of a broader perspective on things as it relates to some of the county involvement. Do, most of you are aware that back in 2014, there was a statewide console on human trafficking that was created by legislation, passed by and signed into law around that time, and it created a 15-member council, which was chaired by the Attorney General. And it focused on building, and building on existing state and local partnerships, working to combat human trafficking. And after that time, there were numerous summits and things that were held that were sponsored by the state and the Attorney General's office. And the county had broad representation in all of those meetings, from all levels of, of our government, from members of our commission down to staffing. As it relates to, as it relates to collaborative things that we do with Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department, as many of you are aware, the Sheriff's Department has a pretty robust, they have a pretty robust anti-trafficking program. And when called upon at times, there are various departments that will work with them on various initiatives to assist as they're doing certain things, and they're having raids, or they're coming, you know, they're coming into contact with victims, where we assist them in that vein. Also, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department, they have a representative that sits on our commission on human trafficking. And that commission was established by the county in December of 2019. And our first meeting was convened in, in February of 2020. HCSO and Tampa Police Department, they also have, they run tip lines. And those numbers were put into heavy use during the 2020 and 2021 year, and there's some significance to that that I'll get to in a minute. And it was basically behind the philosophy of, you know, don't buy it campaign. That was the, that was the tagline back then. And those, those, those tip lines continue to be utilized to this day. And please realize too, as it relates to my, my team, the, the human services team, our social services department, our sunshine line operation, our healthcare services department, and our homeless and community, community services department, they're very much involved, you know, now and then in terms of assisting victims of human trafficking, whether it's, you know, assisting youth and adult victims, to provide them with access to social services, or including education assistance, or rental and transportation support, where, where, where we're heavily involved in those kind of issues. Commissioner Sepeda, it also asked us to specifically deal with or provide information as it related to county funding of certain initiatives going back from 2020 to current. And, and, we, we gathered information that was both for reoccurring funds and non-reoccurring funding. Just real quickly, we provide reoccurring funding to the trauma care crisis center for two positions that they have in, in the amount of $193,000. You'll be hearing more about that in our companion item from Claire Reynolds when she presents her report from the crisis center. We, we invested $267,000 in training and awareness campaign. And what's significant is about that, going back to 2020, 2021, you remember, we spent about $228,000 with a, with a private consultant, the International Association of Human Trafficking Investigators, that provided us with a, a, a training program that we utilize initially with county employees, see something, say something type of thing, to make us aware of signs and things that we could look, look for for human trafficking. Because if you remember around that time, we had some huge events that were coming to town. We had the Super Bowl, we had WWE, we had NCAA tournament, and those, those, those events breed this kind of activity. So we were very heavily into the training. And also during that time, the other initiative of Hillsborough Heroes was initiated by then former Commissioner Overman, where we reached out to private corporations, constitutional officers, and other city, other governmental entities to get them involved in the awareness campaign. And that proved to be very successful. We also allocated $150,000 to Visit Tampa Bay through, and they did a subcontract through a company, FQ, F, F, FKQ Marketing, which was a huge media blitz campaign. We did everything from bus wraps to digital media signs down at the, down at the airport baggage claim, radio, TV, cable. It was a very successful campaign. We provided $100,000 to court administration for court liaison position, which helped with delinquency crossover, domestic violence, problems, problem solving, and dependency case management. And for, from a non-recurring funding aspect, we partially helped fund the USF Bright project to the tune of $150,000, which provided crossover services and try, and services to bridge the gaps between information and available services that were, that were in the community at that time. From, just real quickly, from a historical reference, one of the first large-scale involvements that the county had back in 2000, back in 2014, we initiated and hosted a collaborative lab over in St. Pete. This initiative was headed up by then Commissioner Sandra Merman, where we gathered over 75 participants from all levels of government. We had state representation, we had local, a lot of the providers from the three county area, Pinellas, Hillsborough, and Pasco were involved. It was a full-day event where we, we came up with kind of an envisioned blueprint. There was a community cooperative model that focused on a number of things: law enforcement, victim services, housing for children and adults, preventive programs, legislative, community awareness, and fundraising. We came up with a prioritized three-to-five-year strategy plan back then, and they built a one-year strategic tactical plan for us. And also that, you know, also another prevalent person that was involved in that, that time, was Ms. Dottie Grover Skipper, who was heading up the community campaign against human trafficking and, and that agency. So I was trying to be brief. I didn't mean to kind of run through this, but let me, Mr. Chair, also, in final comment, just thank Mr. Brandon Wagner and, and his team from Government Relations and Strategic Services Team, both Lisa and Beth, for quickly and diligently putting this, this information together with us. We had a short timeframe, and I think they did, they did a good job covering all this. And as the administrator, I think I mentioned earlier, this is a companion item with E2, and I'm here to answer any questions. And if not, I'll turn it back to the administrator to, to go to the next companion item.
All right. Would you like us to, to vote on receiving the report first, or you want to go to the other item?
I, I wasn't sure if Commissioner Cameron Sepeda had anything she needed before we accepted the report.
Commissioner?
I just want to say that was an awesome report. Mr. Harness, thank you so much. Very thorough, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if we can have a motion to receive the report?
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Marison, Commissioner Cohen. No comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is going to be item E2, the companion item to this. This is a special appearance by Clara Reynolds, the president and CEO of the Crisis Center, to present their information regarding the South Shore expansion and their involvement with human trafficking as well.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. And I truly want to thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, for bringing awareness to this issue and for coming to the Crisis Center with your husband on Friday. I apologize I wasn't there, but I know my team really enjoyed the opportunity to spend some time with you and provide some opportunities to answer any questions. So thank you all so much for that. So I'm gonna cross my fingers. So we have a very, we have three things that we're going to cover today. The first was a question in regards to the, the Crisis Center's operations and the investments that you all are making into the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. You will see that the investment with us really started in 2012, when you invested over $800, over $800,000 to make sure that we were providing 24-hour operation, rape crisis services, as well as the 211 call center. We see ourselves as the community's social utility to ensure that no one in our community has to face crisis alone. And if our services aren't available, we all know that citizens will utilize 911 in their emergency when they don't need to, when they just need some help and support. And so we were able to utilize that investment to make that happen. In 2015, you can see that we, you all invested in our suicide prevention care coordination. This was helping our family members, our friends, our neighbors to help to get through the suicide crisis that really peaked in 2015 and has continued to this day. And then in 2019, you can see that you all made an additional investment in our North Tampa forensic medical services, as well as to increase our suicide prevention care coordination. This has prevented individuals from going into hospitals, from going into deeper level systems and supports when they don't need to. We work in concert with all of the other players in our community to provide the right service to individuals and the right amount at the right time. And I want to also, you know, talk about the fact that your investment basically is a dollar. It's a dollar for every resident in Hillsborough County. And with that single dollar that we receive every year, we were able to generate $8 from additional government, then that is state government, federal government, as well as local fundraising. Our community really believes in the work that we do, and it really takes all of us together to make all of this possible. Again, I just want to go through a few activities, just to remind you all that the funding that you provide funds 94 of our 341 positions at the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. We have already answered close to 60,000 calls this year from community residents who have been in some sort of crisis and have needed our help and support, and we've been able to provide sexual assault advocacy, as well as assistance with prosecution, court preparation and recovery, all on that public service side. And that has to do with our sexual assault work. In addition to the number of rape exams that we have conducted this year, we've also assisted over 100 individuals who came to us after the 120-hour window that we have to respond to an individual to collect DNA evidence. I want to really stress on the fact that the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay is the only place a rape victim over the age of 13 can go to get a rape exam. We're the only place that that can happen. And we have up to 120 hours post-assault to gather that DNA evidence. So that time clock starts very, very quickly. And in an exam that can take anywhere from four to six hours, you can understand that time is of the essence, and which is the reason why we want to make sure that we have services available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You can also see the hours of nursing, as well as the number of people that have been served through suicide prevention in our community. Those 1,100 lives are lives of your family members, friends, and neighbors who were suicidal when they called us, and we were able to prevent any further interaction with any system, and helping those individuals get to a place of better. So thank you for supporting our community. So the next piece I want to talk about is that South Shore expansion. This is in Ruskin. As a reminder, we came, Sheriff Chad Cronister came to us and said, "The Crisis Center needs to have a presence in South County. We are experiencing, as the Sheriff's Department, many rapes that are happening down there, and because of the hour transport up to our North Tampa Center, the four-to-six-hour exam and the hour back, many of those individuals just did not feel that they could afford to be away from their jobs, their families, in order to be able to get that help and support." So that means that evidence was not able to be collected, which meant that prosecution oftentimes was not able to happen. So we worked at that point with Commissioner Cohen, as well as Clerk of the Court Cindy Stewart, to identify a location, and you all know, in April of this year, we were able to open that site. You can see that we have provided 800, over 8,000 hours of forensic nursing at our South Shore Clinic. We have 10 nurses that operate in two 12-hour shifts every single day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We wanted to talk to you a little bit about, just to kind of put it in perspective, the dollar per hour. Those nurses earn $33.33 an hour, and you can see that that is way below what our market is. It is important for these nurses to do the work that they're doing, but we also know that they have families, and they have mouths to feed in their own lives. So that is why this investment is so important. You can see we provide the evidence collection, the rape kits and evidence storage, as well as providing expert court testimony. All of that is done within that dollar amount that we, that you all help us to invest in those individuals, and you can see the average exam time. And then, as Mr. Harness talked about, human trafficking, we have been very fortunate to be able to partner with you on this very important service. Many individuals who are being trafficked come to us for that rape exam and then disclose their trafficking. We had a young woman that came to us last week with her four-month-old son. She's being trafficked by her husband to help make ends meet within the household. That's not something that we necessarily talk about when we think of human trafficking, but that's the reality of what's happening right here in our community. And it's the reason why outreach is so very important. Because in that moment in time, she didn't really see herself as a human trafficking victim, but you all can certainly see that. That's where this education piece is necessary, particularly in our South County community. Commissioner Owen, you know that, you've seen that happen firsthand. So we have a bilingual nurse ambassador who is able to do outreach events and to reach out to individuals in our community. Today at HCC South Shore, we will be doing two events for those HCC students down there, letting them know about the resources and supports that are available right there in their community. And then we also have a human trafficking care coordinator, Stephanie, who's also bilingual, that provides direct services to these victims of human trafficking, and you can see the data and the support there. So in summary, we are really the social utility here in Hillsborough County. The Crisis Center touches over 170,000 individuals every single year. You can see from our history that we have responded every time you have asked us to do something. In 1990, the county, you all, moved sexual assault services out of Tampa General Hospital because at that time, victims of sexual assault were waiting long periods of time in order to be able to get those exams in a public location. Now, they are met individually, in private, again, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we are able to meet the time requirements that law enforcement, as well as the prosecutorial system, needs in order for us to be able to do that work. You can see all of our data that we have available here, and I just want to, again, thank you all. Thank you all for the opportunity to provide, not only you all, but our community, information and education about the work that we do at the Crisis Center. And again, your huge investment really does generate additional dollars that go to serve everybody in our community. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, yeah, I went to the Crisis Center. I was absolutely amazed at all the work that's being done there. And we really need to, if we can't, would like to even get, you know, help even more, especially with marketing and helping, because we really need to let more people know that this is out there and available. You know, especially for like, suicide victims, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
That they don't even know that this exists. So we really need to help more in that area, I believe. And Mr. Harness, before in the, in the report he gave before, the FKQ, FKQ marketing before, for just a small amount of money, they were able to reach 45, and have 45 million impressions. So I really think we need to step it up with that, to help in that area, to get the word out that this is available.
Absolutely.
It's very important, the work that's being done there. Things like that are urgent, obviously. It's really, we really need to let more people know about that. And also, I'm very thankful for the, that the South Shore facility is also opening up there, especially after seeing the other one. So I'm very amazed and thankful for what's happening there and all they're doing to help with many different victims in different areas of their lives, you know, from suicide, human trafficking. And so I'm very thankful for that, and we definitely need to do more to step it up to let the people know that's available. And also with the item, I believe it's B5, looking forward to approving that as well.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cohen?
I just want to thank you for the really comprehensive explanation and history. And it does seem, I'd agree, that we need, one of the things I asked about is a facility kind of central county. I'm thinking more Brandon or Riverview or wherever is appropriate, but it is a, you know, I mean, I thought maybe you'd even make the motion, but I'll just, you know, very much with the victims who need support, I think this board is and the prosecutors seeking justice. They need these forensic exams, and, you know, also, these are victims of violent crime.
Yes, ma'am.
And holding these perpetrators accountable, as you've moved so much, so I'll just move approval of the item.
Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Owen?
Yes, thank you for being here today, and thank you, Commissioner Cohen, for working to get that out in Ruskin, out in South County. You know, I don't even know if that was your district at the time, but you recognized the need out there, and it's really important. I think, you know, one of the best movies I've seen this year is Sound of Freedom. If you all haven't had an opportunity to go see it, it's one of the best movies I've ever seen, but there's a big difference between that type of human trafficking and what we really see here in Florida. It's a, it's very different, actually. And we deal a lot with a lot of young ladies that are working in clubs, where they take their cell phones away and give any, take away any opportunity that they can speak to the public, which are really red flags. And ladies like Dottie Grover Skipper and them, they're warriors on the front line. They actually go to these clubs at night, and they, believe it or not, they let them in. And we really have a great organization and network of folks here that I hope are assisting you, the Crisis Center. One thing that I have made a lot of headway with so far with Chief Judge Sibella, the public defender Julian Holt, and state attorney Susie Lopez, is us creating a human trafficking treatment court right here in Hillsborough County. We have a statute that basically stands for the proposition that if you can prove that you were trafficked by a John, and you're convicted of, say, prostitution, for example, which is very popular, that will come off your record. It's actually a state law. It may not look like we can do a full human trafficking treatment court, but the possibility of a docket, creating a docket, along with the mental health component, is looking like a reality. So look forward to working with you in the future, anything that we can do, or I can do as a county commissioner, you know, we're here for the Crisis Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Russell?
Thank you. You had mentioned a couple of times that in Ruskin, you're making sure that they're bilingual, and I'm well aware of the demographics down there. Do you, do you believe that, and it's a horrible topic, and I'm well aware of how much illegal immigrants that we get through here in Hillsborough County, do you believe a lot of the victims down there are illegal immigrants, and that they just don't feel like it's safe for them to go and seek care anywhere?
Not yet, honestly. We have a lot of work to do there, particularly in the current climate. So we know that there are, that there are individuals down, particularly in the South County community, that we have got to do more of a job of reaching out to, to let them know that care is available for them, that there's support available for them, and that they don't need to be fearful.
Yeah, you kind of led into where I was going with this, and I actually became aware of a group down there that actively teaches these young women to not trust the sheriffs, when that's, the sheriff's job is to not deport people, right?
Correct.
And the sheriff's job is to protect people. And I would really encourage you to get with the Hispanic Advisory Council, they are really well-connected, they're all bilingual, and I think that this is something that they would be more than happy to help you market down there and partner with you on. So if you need some help connecting with those folks, I'm happy to, happy to do that for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Clara, as always, for that excellent report. It's such a great thing to be able to focus on the Crisis Center. So thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, for bringing this up, because really, awareness is so much an important part of all this. Commissioner Owen, at the time that this all came up, it really just stemmed from the fact that it was impossible to imagine a migrant farmworker who had been assaulted making their way to Bears Avenue in the timeframe allotted in order to have an examination. The county is just too big. And the, I think that the real critical point here is that without these services, people will literally just fall away, and they will not be able to be helped. And, you know, I'm really glad that in talking about this, the idea that perhaps in the future we could even expand this to other areas of the county might be something that's on the table. Because Bears Avenue in Ruskin still leaves an awful lot of people that are not within access to all of this. So I just think it's not terrific, but I think it's really necessary that we keep bringing this to the forefront until we know that we can offer services to everyone in our county that needs it.
Thank you. And I'll wrap it up. I just want to say, I've worked closely with the Crisis Center since first being elected many, many moons ago, although it was located right on the corner from my house. Candidly, I didn't know about the Crisis Center or its mission, but at the time, my father said, "Hey, we need to go in and meet this guy, Dennis Ross." I was in the Marine Corps with him, who was the CEO at the time of the Crisis Center. And ever since that meeting, I've had such a, such an appreciation for the invaluable work that the Crisis Center provides. I've been privileged enough to participate in dozens of events through the years, speaking probably 10 different years, Take Back the Night, and Curtis Hickson, and just all the different events. And most recently is yesterday, we had a press conference, Ashley Moody had a press conference at the Crisis Center with Clara, and the sheriff, and myself, and Senator Collins, and where they highlighted the Hope Hotline, which is tailored for first responders, you know, law enforcement and firefighters who are struggling with mental health issues. These are, you know, the people that'll go out and help others the most, but many times won't ask for help themselves. And it was, it was a very moving, moving event. And again, Clara, you know, we've been friends for many, many years, and since our kids played softball, baseball together years ago, and now both of our sons are at Florida, go Gators. But I was thrilled when you interviewed and got this position. You're the perfect person for this job. You're doing an outstanding job, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. No other comments, please accord your vote for B5.
Actually, that was E2.
That's, that's what I was going to ask about. Because I had, I was doing B5, but...
There's a, you have to have a motion to receive special appearance?
Well, okay, so we were hearing Clara's presentation was E2, but if you want to just incorporate B5 into that?
Yeah, because it's not a motion just for her to speak.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the motion is for B5.
For B5, yeah.
Does staff need to say anything about B5?
We don't have anything more to say.
Okay, so the motion's for B5. All right, please accord your vote.
Truly thank you.
Motion carrying seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, who was the second for that motion, please?
Oh, Cameron Sepeda.
Thank you, sir.
All right, B2?
Yes, item B2, this is the Acceptance County Internal Auditor's Annual Audit Plan, and Melinda Genzarli with the auditor's office is here to present this item.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Melinda Genzarli, and I am here today to present, to request the board to accept the 2024 Annual Audit Plan. And I have a very brief presentation for you today to go over the risk assessment and planning process followed to develop the plan. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, thank you. All right, so a comprehensive risk assessment and audit planning process was developed to optimize the allocation of resources within the County Internal Auditor's Office across a diverse range of auditable areas within the organizational framework of the Board of County Commissioners. This strategic process was conducted in conformance with the international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing. The methodology of selecting audits, advisory, and other audit services is defined in the County Internal Auditor's 2024 Annual Audit Plan Report. And the annual audit plan is really a guide for the deployment of resources, so it is subject to change throughout the year as the auditable environment changes. The board will be notified of any minor changes to the plan. Material changes will be brought to the board for input and approval. On September 5th, the County Internal Audit Committee met and was provided a detailed presentation on the planning and assessment process performed. and was provided a detailed presentation on the planning and assessment process performed. The Audit Committee determined that the County Internal Auditor performed an annual risk assessment based on her own judgment of risks after consideration of input from senior management, commissioners, and other internal and external providers of assurance services. The Audit Committee also determined that the annual audit plan resource requirements align with the available resource budget. Therefore, pursuant to resolution R20-0111, the Audit Committee recommends the board to accept the 2024 Annual Audit Plan. So here we have the 2024 Annual Audit Plan that was discussed with each commissioner prior to today's meeting. So I will answer any questions before I ask the board to accept the 2024 Annual Audit Plan.
Any questions, comments? Not coming over motion to.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp. After no comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bonnie, next item?
Thank you. We can now move to the regular agenda, the items that are remaining. The first one is item B1. This is to consider draft changes to the county commissioner's rules of order. And Hank Ennis with the County Attorney's Office will present the changes for your consideration.
Hank Ennis, County Attorney's Office. Commissioners, as you know, your rules of order require that you set up a committee after each election to review the rules of order. The committee was made up of Commissioner Hagan, Owen, and Wostel. And Brandon Wagner also served on the committee along with Rick Van Arsdale. I'll go over the recommended changes to the rules of order quickly, and then I'll answer any questions you may have. We made, recommending changes to Rule 2, which changes the board parliamentarian to the clerk to the board, that'd be Rick. Rule 4 removes the 10-minute recess after the election of the new board officers. We didn't feel there was a need for a 10-minute recess, just a quick change of the dais. Rule 5 clarifies the organizational assignment selection process when appointing commissioners to the various boards, agencies, and authorities. We defined what those were. It's not in the rules, but Rick gave us the actual wording for that. Rule 8 provides that the chair shall announce that a substitute motion shall replace the prior main motion prior to the vote on the substitute. Rule 12 changes the time a commissioner may pull an item from the consent agenda from 4 o'clock to 2 o'clock the day prior to a board meeting. And Rule 14 requires that each proclamation and commendation be approved and signed by at least six commissioners and references that the board policy, that proclamations shall be limited to two, proclamations and commendations be limited to two per board meeting unless authorized by the chair. We additionally made changes to two board policies to be consistent with the rules of order. We made a change to rule, policy 01.23, which limits the number of proclamations per board meeting to two. And then we also made changes to board policy, or recommended changes, to board policy 01.30, which will provide commissioners the opportunity to request that positions on boards and councils be re-advertised within 90 days of an election. After the board approves these rule changes, according to the rules of order, we have to bring them back again for a second time at the next board meeting. And if it's helpful, we can vote on the rules separately and then vote on the two policies separately also. And I'm here for any questions.
All right, thanks, Hank. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like for us to vote separately because I have some comments regarding the additional, considering the draft changes.
Okay.
If we can do that.
So your questions are about a particular, about a particular rule or?
No, the board policy that asks the 90 days after the election to re-advertize.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, well, we haven't had a motion to pass this as is yet, but I would have several amendments on several of the rules that I'd like to go through, including the one that Commissioner Myers mentioned as we go through this. So I just wanted to alert someone to that. I don't know, no one's made a motion to pass the decision yet.
Are you gonna, do you want to highlight your concerns?
Okay.
What point of order? Do you think we should just vote on separately on each item? Or is it going to be on particular?
Well, what I was thinking, depending on the concerns, I guess, is that if there was concern on one or two, we would remove those, vote on everything else, and then come back and address the individual ones. That's kind of what I was thinking.
I have concerns on three. One is Rule 5. One is on Rule 14. And the third one is on the board policy, which Commissioner Myers mentioned.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Owen?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm out. I was, okay, that's my comment.
Okay, so can we have a motion for the draft changes of the rules with the exception of Rule 5 and 14, which we'll discuss and vote on separately? Okay, motion for the remaining rules by Commissioner Owen?
Just a point of order because I know part of this. Are we voting separately already on board policy?
The policies be separate.
Okay, thank you.
These are just the rules with the exception of Rule 5 and 14. That's by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, so I guess we'll start with Rule 5.
I can just give a brief summary of what that is. The changes to Rule 5 relate to the selecting of commissioners for the various boards and councils. And Rick and the team worked together and came up with the process that you normally follow, a round robin process, starting from one side, going through the other, and so forth, until all the boards and councils are filled. We then also put in, if the commissioners remain the same from the prior election, someone can make a motion just to say everybody stays the same except for the boards where a majority of the board sits on the board. And that's the summary of the rule change.
Any, any comment, Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and I think a lot of this came from, if you all recall, an organizational meeting year before last, and I think the year before that motion. I think maybe Commissioner Kemp, you made the motion, or someone else, that all TPO and HEART kind of go on its own separate slate, and then you start picking individually. And I made that motion this time, I didn't get a second. But I actually don't agree with that. I think I can agree more with Commissioner Hagan's position that we need to pick, you know, fairly. It doesn't matter what board you're on or what board you're requesting. There is no particular board that should be looked at differently than the other, and we should do it in the fair process regardless of who's in the majority of the time. So that's where that came from. So, thanks.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. So I understand where that came from, but, or where you're stating. But this is also about making an exception, for instance, this year, which you can always do. I mean, you can always reassign the entire thing every year, you know. But to, right now, what this says, it relates to elections, years between elections, like this year, where no new commissioners and the board, where there are no new commissioners. And the board may decide to keep existing appointments. So the draft states, however, if members of the board remain the same as the prior year, a motion may be made by any commissioner to keep the same commissioner representatives on each board, agency, or authority, excluding the boards, agencies, and authorities on which the majority of the board sits, without following the clerk's organizational assignment process. So the language in the, next to the last clause, excluding those boards and agencies and authority on which a majority of the board sits. So it would be the TPO and HEART. And it seems to me, if we're going to keep assignments already agreed to and worked out, we should either go through the process again, including it all, if that's what you want to do, but not necessarily by mandate, exclude these two boards and make an exception in those.
Hank, can you clarify?
All right, well, the above process is the normal process except for the times, as Commissioner Kemp said, when everybody just wants to keep the same thing and they want to just remain on the same board. However, when that occurs, there was discussion by the committee that we don't want the two boards where a majority of the board sits on those boards to go through that process. And those would be voted on separately. And that's what the committee wanted.
The intent, from what I recall, it wasn't as much as if it was in-between elections or the timing of the election. It was essentially not to allow cherry-picking of TPO and HEART. That was my understanding because, I mean, it had happened a couple of times, and I vigorously opposed it the first time, and I was the only one. I lost 6 to 1, and that's fine. But that was the goal. It wasn't to allow boards, allow commissioners to stay on the same board except TPO or HEART. So this was your idea, I believe, Commissioner Owen. Can you clarify?
Yeah, well, one of the issues is I was in the hospital for the second meeting, so I may have missed some of the back and forth on that. So, but yeah, as to my intent, I think you're alluding to it, so I'll.
It's basically every board should be treated, every board should be treated the same and should be a part of the selection process. And if commissioners are on HEART or TPO one year, and the next year, the board decides everyone to remain on the same boards, then you remain on the same boards. You don't take those off. I mean, they're still, everyone's included.
Right, and we can exclude that, or we can remove that phrase, and then the two options would exist, that you go through the round robin, or if everybody wants to remain the same, that's a vote on its own.
Okay, Commissioner Cohen?
I think you clarified what I was going to ask about, so I'll.
Commissioner Wostel?
The, the intent of the, you weren't there for the second time, so I was the one who clarified on, when we talked about it on round one, we didn't come to a solution about how to achieve, making sure it didn't happen. The round robin can still exist for all of the normal boards and that are represented by a minority of the Board of County Commissioners. Or the emotion can be made that they all stay the same. And the only ones that that wouldn't apply to is to prevent a hijacking of the majority-owned ones. And it would be also the third one, which would be the EPC, which is also represented by a majority of the board. And if somebody wanted to have the opportunity to go after the chair seat, for instance, the seat that I sit on, then they should have that and it not be circumvented by a likely passing of all boards staying the same, which would be all of the single member represented, or the minority-represented boards, THIA, Aviation Authority, Aquarium, et cetera. That was the intent of the modification to it.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I can appreciate the way that Commissioner Hagan, you formulated it. And I think that, you know, I don't know exactly, but I'd like a substitute motion that more reflected the language and concerns that Commissioner Hagan just expressed, which I guess would be that you would eliminate.
Right.
These paragraphs requiring on this election year and just have it be, I guess, an exclusive round robin as a dictate for all years, or, you know, that we can move to waive.
Oh, you can always move to waive the rules. But I mean, I think to get to Commissioner Hagan's way of doing it, I think excluding, if we remove that sentence, you then have the round robin, or you have everyone remain the same. Those two options.
Well, and we discussed this, I know, in one of the meetings. The reality is, during that organization process, at least in my tenure, it's always been very cordial. And if someone wants to, you know, to serve on the board, nine times out of 10, at least, I know I've done it a bunch of times, I've voluntarily given it up. And if not, then you just vote on it. But usually, it's handled without any real dissension or anything. Commissioner Wostel?
In all, in how many years do we know, how often does it happen that a motion to keep all the boards stay the same? Are you, do you know, does it happen?
Maybe just the last few times? Is that about right?
Yes.
A few more, I think, a few more than that.
Commissioner Hagan would be the expert, I think.
A few more than that. I mean, I wouldn't say half, but between a few and half the time is probably a fair description.
You know, we, we don't have to have this in here at all.
The, the re-advertising within 90 days, was that for our boards or for the boards that we appointed to, though? I'm getting those two sections. I don't remember which one, who added the 90-day.
That is in the accompanying policy. And that is not part of your rules of order.
Yeah, we'll address the policies in a moment.
Okay, because they're getting commingled in this conversation. It's making it confusing. Because we're not talking about re-advertising within 90 days of the boards that we select to sit on, right?
No, 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 that's the, you know, like the Citizens Advisory Board, that kind of thing.
So all that we're talking about right now is how we're going to pick our own boards.
Correct.
And it's very simple and clear. I don't, I don't know why the water is getting muddied here. Is that there can be a clean motion that makes that all of the minority-represented boards stay the same, but that every year, we will, we will reround robin the two or three boards that are majority represented by the Board of County Commissioners. That's what the policy says.
That's how it currently reads, yes, sir.
Yes, okay, so that I will support, and I will not support anything that Commissioner Kemp has recommended.
All right, Commissioner Myers?
The simple way to do this, just as we've done in the past, when we need to waive the rules, we just waive the rules. I mean, that's a simple way to handle this.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll make a substitute motion to keep the policy as we have it with a guarantee of a round robin for all positions, which I guess that would clear, that would ensure on all years that that's available, and then we can have an option to waive, reassigning any boards at all.
Well, I think that was the original motion, right? I don't think we had a. Okay, so.
No, that's different, well, that's different than what this.
Yeah, point of order, I think, yeah, we're handling Rule, we're handling Rule 5 separately, and we hadn't have a motion on Rule 5 yet. So that would be a, you know, just a.
Amendment to.
No, a new motion.
That's true, a new motion. Okay, so that.
That's a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Is there a second?
What is the, what is the new motion?
The motion is to more or less satisfy what Commissioner Hagan said were his thoughts about this, which is, to clarify this, each time we do this in an initial year, to ensure that we do it with a round robin process, and you can correct me if I don't have this right, Commissioner Hagan, to do it as a round robin process. And on other years, either we can elect to do the round robin process again, or with all of the positions, or waive that and let everybody continue to serve on those years in those positions.
So your understanding of that is that every year, the board has the option of round robin or everyone electing to stay on the same boards? Is that the intent?
Yes, yes, sir. We have the round robin, or however, if the members of the board remain the same as the prior year, a motion may be made by any commissioner to keep the same commissioner representatives on each board, agency, and authority without following the clerk's organizational assignment selection process. Yeah, there's two options.
Okay, but does that motion address, in my terms, the cherry-picking of HEART?
It's, it's all or nothing. It's like you either do everybody the same or you go through and do the round robin.
But the round, does the round robin option allow the cherry-picking of the boards?
You mean like negotiating between the boards? You mean like negotiating between the boards? Like I want this one and you want that one?
No, in years past, before we did the round robin, someone would make a motion for certain commissioners to be on a particular board. That's what we want to, that's what I know we want.
It does not provide for that option. In other words, if someone makes a motion that I want to pick HART and TPO and EPC first, that's not part of this.
So the board would have to waive the rules?
To do that, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Wostol?
But my option does 100% address that exact concern, correct?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, just for clarification, because there's, for some reason, an inability to understand that, my option 100% clarifies that issue.
And just for clarity, can you again explain how it addresses that issue?
So the round robin is still guaranteed as an option for everything. The policy to keep all boards that are minority represented stays the same, but the cherry picking of HART, TPO, and EPC would be protected from any motion by this because they are majority represented and those can, would still be able to be round robbing, right? So if the effort is to protect the round robinning of those, mine, in fact, is the most protecting version of this, to make sure that there's no cherry picking of HART, TPO, and EPC.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Second, Commissioner Owen, please record your vote on the motion.
Motion failed two to five. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Hagan, Myers, Owen, and Wostol voted no.
Okay, Commissioner Wostol, you want to make a motion for...
Move for approval as it reads.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wostol. Second, Commissioner Owen. No other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioner Cohen and Kent voted no.
Okay, Rule 14?
Yes, the changes we made to Rule 14 relate to proclamations and commendations. And I'll just summarize. Each proclamation must be signed by at least six commissioners. And further to Board Policy 123, the number of proclamations and commendations shall be limited to two per board meeting.
Comments on Rule 14?
It relates to both proclamations and commendations.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I know this is, we've dealt with this many years before. The draft language that we have here changes requirements for how many commissioners must sign a proclamation or commendation for it to be valid, requiring six commissioners instead of four. At each regular meeting of the board, proclamations and commendations may be presented by board members at every single meeting. However, each board member, the draft provides, shall be limited to seven proclamations or commendations per calendar year. Each must be approved and again, signed by at least six commissioners. I can understand the concerns of the amount of time, a lot of precious meeting time, that our proclamations and commendations sometimes take. In fact, I could support some efforts to look at those again. I can also understand the desire to limit proclamations and commendations to matters that have broad support on the board, especially when presented at the board meeting. But I'm not convinced that six commissioners as a rule really makes sense.
Visit our website at www...
We typically require four. And on some rare occasions, five votes to do things in anything we do, four or five votes. Only the consent agenda is the only thing we have that's unanimous. There aren't really any six-vote processes. Another thing to consider is that not all proclamations and commendations are presented at the board meetings. I've many times presented, not many times, but sometimes out in the community. In many cases, it makes more sense to present them at community events. And I recently had, was much appreciated that I came to their event rather than then having to come here. So I'm proposing a dual standard instead. Seven signatures to present in the boardroom and a majority of four to present in the community. I haven't received more than six signatures on any proclamation or commendation this year. So I know that this could hurt my ability to present in the boardroom ever, but I'm willing to do this just to kind of have a more suitable rule. So I'll move to change the draft to require that all proclamations and commendations presented at board meetings must have unanimous support of the board. However, where other proclamations and commendations are concerned, the existing rule remains only four commissioners' support is required.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Do I have a second? My motion dies, lack of a second. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and I hate to be the party pooper on commendations and proclamations in the boardroom, but I do think there are far too many that are done. I was really thinking about that motion, as a matter of fact. One of my questions is, for you to present out in the public, which I think the overwhelming majority of these should be done, this is addressing that we have to have six for that as well?
No, this is your rules of order, how you operate here in this setting.
So we weren't even really, we weren't addressing that. So that's what I, I think that maybe Commissioner Kemp, yeah. If you want to go ahead.
For clarification, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kemp.
No, so if that is the rule, then I'll abide by that.
I think it says what you thought it said.
Okay.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but...
All right, yeah, because, and I don't know, again, I missed another meeting, but, you know, the purpose of this is anything that's kind of politically charged, you know, for a combination proclamation. I mean, mine, I would be for zero, to be frank with you, proclamations in the boardroom. I really would. I think that going out into the public and presenting these, you know, where they are, I think is a lot better process. But, you know, when I pick them, I pick fairs and Tony Saladino tournaments and things that just aren't politically charged. And the reason that I brought up six was in case, you know, that's not this board, but in case there was a board in the future where one had it out for another commissioner and was just no on everything, it would prevent that. So I think, Commissioner Kemp, this may, and if you could maybe just allude to that too, because Commissioner Cohen said he thinks that it says what Commissioner Kemp was saying, I want to make sure because my purpose is not where it's out to the public where you'd have to have six signatures. Mine was more so in the boardroom, is what I was, so if you could allude to that, please.
Right, you know what I would suggest? I would say excluding those presented by individual commissioners in the community. And that would solve that problem.
Or if we say, or if we just say four signatures for any proclamation or recommendation outside of the boardroom.
Yes, we could say that as well. I mean, we can clarify that.
Yeah, whatever language you think is...
Can I make that, do I need to make that amendment?
I think you should.
Yes.
Okay.
Then that's mine, if I could be.
Just add it to the, just add it to the motion. Commissioner Wostol's next, but I just want to say, we spent a lot of time on this one and I really do think it was a compromise from all three of the committee members, particularly Commissioner Wostol, and he may say this next, with his position on signing some of these things. Because if we went unanimous, we wouldn't have any of them. Right?
I have signed many of the pasts on this month, just to be...
No, 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 I'm applauding you because I think you recognize that you may not sign, and so you said, let's have six. So I thought it was a compromised position, but Commissioner Wostol?
So I would never support anything that squanders an elected official's ability to go do something privately. So if Commissioner Myers wants to go give 50 with just her signature on it, that, I believe, is completely something she should have access and a right to. So I wouldn't support anything that puts a minimum on things external of the boardroom. I'm more than happy to make a substitute motion that adds the language excluding those proclamations and commendations awarded external of the boardroom of Hillsborough County Government and leaving everything else as is. So I'll make that motion. I'll make that substitute motion.
Second.
Okay, so the substitute by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Commissioner Cohen?
So let me just get a little clarification here, or try to, I think you do have to have four signatures to present it outside the boardroom. If it doesn't have four signatures, it doesn't have the force of being the resolution of the county commission. Any one of us can go out into the community and present something under our own name and under our own letterhead. So my suggestion was going to be that in order to present it in the boardroom, it needs six signatures. In order to present it in the community, it needs four. I think...
I'll make that amendment.
Okay, thank you. I think that's perfect.
Commissioner Kemp?
Sorry, I was just going to clarify with that as well. I thought it should have four for anything under the name of the board in the community.
Okay, so I think we landed in a good spot. All right. Motion, Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, now the policy?
Yes, the first policy relates to 01.30, and that is the policy speaking to nominations for citizens' boards. And we added language, newly elected commissioners may notify the board and council coordinator, which is Luanne, within 90 days of their election, that they wish to advertise one or more current members of the county's boards and councils. Any member of a county board or council whose position is re-advertised may submit an application to remain on that board or council.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have some concerns about this because when a commissioner, after the 90 days, appoints someone, then that commissioner might look at someone else that they might want to appoint. And so that person might have adjusted their schedule thinking that they're going to be, have the opportunity to serve two to four years. So I'd like to make a motion that 90 days prior to an election, that the boards and council positions are placed on hold until after an election to give the commissioner the opportunity for an appointment.
I think that the intent of this was 90 days after the election.
Right, so that means after the election, the person that we've appointed prior to, the new commissioner would have the opportunity to, for that individual not to perhaps stay on that board. Am I correct?
I think that might be saying what, I think it might be saying what you want to do. In other words, after the election, within 90 days, you want the new commissioner to be able to determine whether or not that prior individual should remain on the board.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
No, I'm saying 90 days prior to, that this board, we don't appoint anyone.
Oh, okay.
So we're just holding them all up until after the election.
Okay.
And so that way, no one has to be appointed and then in November, you find out, oh, I'm not on the board because I did not get reappointed. And you might have been appointed in October or September prior to the election. I don't think that's fair to any of our citizens to be treated that way. So that's why I'm asking for the 90 days prior to, we just put a hold on any vacant position that we have.
Okay.
It sounds like it's a separate issue.
That is a separate issue.
Do we, I mean, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I just think it's separate, so...
We would just add language that prior to an election, 90 days prior to elections, no one would be appointed to any boards and councils.
Right. I mean, that's just how I feel because I wouldn't want a person to be appointed and then the election, just say the election we just had in November, we made an appointment September 2022, okay? We've got a new board. So the new board asks then, in the 90 days, to re-advertize. So those persons who was elected September, October, might not be on the board. That is not fair to our citizens. That's all I'm saying, board members. That is not fair for them to submit an application thinking they're going to serve on our board or councils for two to four years and then we come right back and say, no, you're not going to be on the board. Put yourself in that position. That's all I ask. Think about it. Would you want to be treated that way?
I just think, and I'll open it up for the board members' comments, but I think it's a, it's a separate issue that could also be adopted along with what's here because what's here could apply to someone that had been on that board for a year or two years, not longer, even not, we're not talking about just for a couple of months, which I certainly understand, and that, that's not right. But they could theoretically have been on that board for a year or two.
Yes.
Right? So, all right, we'll see what everyone else says and we'll come back. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I think we are conflating the many ways that we make appointments, boards, and individuals. This board policy overall is about appointing and confirming citizens to boards and councils. And to be clear, some appointments are individual appointments made by an individual commissioner, such as the county's Citizen Advisory Committee. These individual appointments are based on the prerogative of a single sitting commissioner. So this, this policy, though, doesn't apply to individual commissioner appointments. We already, most of those appointments, however, we, most of the appointments to the boards we're talking about require a vote of the whole board for selection. We already have a process in place when a new commissioner comes in to all these, when you have an individual commissioner representing you on one of the CACs or something like that, you can change that. That is opportunity given. In fact, I was overwhelmed by that when I first started. So there's no, there's no stopping that from happening on individual appointments. However, most appointments to boards require a vote of the whole board for selection. And it's those appointments that this change relates to. The proposed board policy is included in the, after the rules of order, in our packet to changes on the third page of the policy where it adds these two sentences. Newly elected commissioners may notify boards and council coordinators within 90 days of their selection that they wish to advertise one or more current members of boards, county boards and councils. Any member of a county board or council whose position is re-advertised may submit an application to remain on that board or council. That is the suggested policy. And I definitely cannot support this. I think it sets a very bad precedent for our citizens committees, which are appointed by us all, not our individual appointments, which we can make, but our citizens committees. I'm very concerned about how this could be used by lobbyists or special interests to target individual citizens that are serving a term on the committee, who volunteer their time to serve on these boards and have been appointed for a period of time. For example, just imagine a lobbyist who has some special interests, sees a citizen on an advisory board that the lobbyist doesn't like what that citizen is saying, that the lobbyist doesn't like the citizen volunteer because the volunteer maybe raises uncomfortable questions or concerns about policy or other matters that the lobbyist would prefer to keep quiet. So, you know, they can please their clients, make more money. The lobbyist goes and targets individuals on these group committees and asks the candidate to pull this resident off that committee where they serve. The first 90 days they start serving, they target not their own appointments, but just general appointments that were made by the board with a length of service and time. We should not be encouraging this kind of thing. So I think we have a good system now where you can make your own appointments as an individual commissioner to any number of commissions that you're allowed to make your own appointment and that can happen immediately without a problem. When on this group, you know, any commission that the board appoints as a group, I think we just need to wait till those commissions come to again and at that point, move and, you know, elect who we want to when the new candidates come, the new applications come.
Thank you, Commissioner Wostol.
So I'm making a...
Hold on, Commissioner Kemp. Are you finished?
I just, I just want to move to remove these two sentences from the draft that I stated... stated before. Newly elected commissioners may notify the boards and council coordinators within 90 days of their election that they wish to advertise one or more current members of the county boards or councils. Any member of a county board or council whose position is re-advertised may submit an application to remain on that board or council. I'd like to move to delete that from the draft.
Do we have a second? Just as a point of order, I don't think there's, if we're voting on this separately, the thing to do would be to vote against it, I think, not, if you remove it, then there'll be nothing to vote on, so.
That's what I, I wasn't clear, I wasn't sure if that was the only, thank you.
I-
Okay, for that reason, I'll, I'll be not supporting this change.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, in terms of representation, there's several boards where Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner Owen never get their voter representation on because the terms of these individuals extend beyond their first term in office, which kind of fails and sounds like voter suppression and anti-democratic in its values. So maybe we need to either adjust the terms of these appointed boards down to the election cycle, or we need to give newly elected officials the right that they've earned as a newly elected official, the opportunity to extend either that individual's appointment or vote to appoint someone else, which I believe is their rights. But right now, two of them have been robbed of that right because they might not be here during this entire cycle of at least four that I've found. So I will be supporting the motion as it sits. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
So I think that the, the system of rolling boards means that ultimately it catches up with itself in terms of the new commissioners getting to have an impact on who's on what boards. Some of that impact may well last beyond their term. I do think, though, that what Commissioner, and so I, I really agree with Commissioner Kemp, that it's not, we shouldn't be interrupting people in the middle of their terms once there's been an election. But I think Commissioner Myers' motion actually goes to, to the problem in another way, which is, I think, basically saying, we're going to have a moratorium on doing appointments for 90 days prior to an election, so that when new commissioners are elected, there will be a, not a backlog, but a, a nice body of appointments to be made that will wait for the new commissioners. I think that, that's, I also appreciate the clarification, because I don't think it, it wasn't clear to me at least, whether or not this applied to only boards that we appoint collectively, or it applied to our individual appointments. And my understanding is that when you're elected, the individual appointments all come right back to you, and you're able to appoint, like, Citizens Advisory Committee and those type of, in those type of roles. So I, I agree that, I, I'm not going to support this proposed language, but I will support, which I think will be a separate motion, what Commissioner Myers is suggesting.
All right, Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, I think it's interesting that, you know, we reorganize every year. I, I actually wouldn't be for any type of board appointment where you serve more than one year. I think we should have to make those decisions every year, because I don't see how it's fair for someone like me to some boards that I think, and I, quite frankly, I do think are not, were not very functional boards with membership, that I'm saddled with that particular individual as an appointment when I'm an elected official, and I don't ever get an opportunity, say I didn't, you know, I'm up for reelection, say I didn't prevail. There are certain boards I had no impact on, and I was, I would be saddled by a predecessor or a presiding board, not predecessor, presiding board. You know, I, I hate to sound heartless, Commissioner Myers, I feel like I have been today, but, you know, for, for, I do feel bad if somebody has agreed to serve on a board for three months, but it's that old saying that elections do have consequences. And I think it is a form of voter suppression to not allow the newly elected official to appoint somebody to a board during their time of service. And that's exactly what would happen to, say, me and Commissioner Hagan in this instance. So, you know, I'm somebody that would be for each year, we would reorganize every board, but I know that's just not the way it works. But, but there are, there are some boards that, you know, quite frankly, that I think that I would make different decisions than my predecessors would have. So I'm going to be supporting it. Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Kemp, let him have a couple of comments.
I'll just say that there's even some statutorily required boards, like Hart. I think it's statute requiring three years, by the way, so I don't even know where, you know, the other language is on these, but I'll, I'll do the same as if Commissioner Myers makes that motion. I think that that's a, a good motion.
All right, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Well, I was in the queue to second Wostel, actually. Commissioner Wostel?
Okay, so your motion was as is? I'm going to support the motion, and then I'm, I'm also going to support Commissioner Myers' motion. First of all, it sounds like we need to tighten up the board appointment process with respect to timing and, and duration of the, of the term, so something maybe we can address that in the future. But I understand where Commissioner Kemp's coming from as far as, you know, these are volunteers that are, you know, giving of their time and, and efforts to serve on these boards. At the same time, when you think that with every new administration, again, we're not, I guess, an administration per se, but whether it's, you know, governor, president, these organizations, they know the game plan. I mean, they know that they're subject to getting tossed and new staffs coming in. That's just the name of the game. Now, sometimes administrations retain certain members of the prior administration, but many times, probably more often than not, they're getting booted. And that's just, as Commissioner Owen said, elections do have consequences. So to me, I think the new elected officials should have the ability to determine who serves on, on these boards. So that's going to win out on me on, on this vote. So, okay, so we've got the motion by Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, please record your vote.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
All right, Commissioner Myers, do you want to make that second motion?
My motion is 90 days prior to an election, that the boards and council positions are placed on hold until after an election to give the commissioners an opportunity to make their appointment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Wostel. The newer the comments on the motion, please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp? Okay. Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, do we need to vote on the second policy, or is that included?
No, we do need to vote on that as well. That is the policy relating to, we've changed the number of proclamations to two per board meeting, and that's policy 01.23, and it also references that it needs six signatures to sign the proclamations and commendations.
All right, and then the chair still has the, the ability to authorize a, a third one?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Commissioner Cohen?
I wanted to speak after we're done with the voting.
Okay, um, so no questions on, maybe a motion? Motion, Commissioner Myers?
Second.
Second Commissioner Wostel, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, and I'll, I'll be brief. First of all, thank you to everyone that served on the committee, whether we agree or disagree on the details. It's, it's important that, that these rules reflect, you know, the, the wishes of the board. I, I brought this up to the administrator and to our attorney, and since we can't talk to each other offline, I want to bring it up to everyone. In a few weeks or a month's time, the, the administrator's going to bring us the proposed calendar for next year. And I wanted to just plant the seed in everyone's mind that I was looking for it, it's not a part of our rules, it's under the, the administrator's jurisdiction, but the issue of having our meetings on a Thursday after a Monday holiday as opposed to sticking to our usual day of Wednesday, I understand the reason that it's been done that way, I think, is to, to allow for the agenda briefings and to make sure there's enough staff time to prepare us for meetings. The, the reason, though, that I wanted to bring it up is because we know the way the calendars are set up. All of the agencies have their day, and everybody has their meeting at a certain day and time to avoid conflicting with one another. And when we move our meeting from a Wednesday to a Thursday, it sometimes creates conflicts that don't exist otherwise. And I'm not suggesting any hard and fast rule, I'm simply suggesting that when we look at next year's calendar, we give some thought to whether or not, on those few months where that happens, we want to continue to do it that way or not. What happened to me last week with the Aviation Authority was a good example. I had their budget public hearing at the same time as our board meeting. I ended up getting caught in traffic on the way back from there, and I almost missed a couple of votes that I really wanted to be here for. It, it's not the biggest issue in the world, but I just wanted to bring it up because it, it might be something that we want to, you know, adjust as we go forward.
And I ran into the same issue years ago when I sat on the Aviation Authority. That happened a couple of times a year. Commissioner Wostel?
Is it, do we have to push it to Thursday, or can you simply advertise it at an earlier time to ensure that we can still come in on Wednesday?
I, I don't know if it's been a rule, Christine and I were talking about it, a rule or a practice, if there was a Monday holiday, that we've moved it to a Thursday. But if there isn't a rule, we could probably just adjust that with your direction. I do see, I was just looking on the calendar real quickly, I see that that's going to happen in January, although that's been advertised, perhaps we can look at changing that one too, because I could see that one, that one's coming up.
Okay. Yeah, I've had to miss important meetings because it created conflicts with two of the other boards I sit on, so if that's a thing, I'd fully, fully support it.
All right, and Park on, Commissioner Kemp, I just want to point out, this particular issue was not on the agenda, and I'm leaving here in 28 minutes, so whether we're not done or not, I-
There's no motion, just wanted to bring it up.
Commissioner Kemp, you want to add anything for?
Yeah, well, I was just concerned, my biggest concern was staff considerations, because I know they have trouble fitting everything in, but not only is it good in terms of calendar planning, but I think sometimes for the public, they get really confused. We have a number of meetings on Thursday, and I'll say Wednesday, except this time it's Thursday because of the Monday holiday, and it's, I just think it's easier to always have it on a Wednesday if we can possibly move to that.
All right, Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. My comment would be just to move agenda, agenda deadline, push it back, and then we can be accommodated.
All right, thanks. Bonnie, next item?
Thank you. The next item is item B3. This is to approve the letters of agreement with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration for the Low Income Pool Program. Jean Early with Healthcare Services is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Jean Early, Department Director for Healthcare Services, and we're asking in B3 to approve the letters of agreements with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration for participation in the low-income pool, graduate medical education, and related intergovernmental transfer programs for not to exceed $44,973,773 and 74. Approve the Intergovernmental Transfer IGT questionnaire, and no additional funds are required.
All right, thank you. A motion?
Move approval, second.
Motion approved. Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Myers, no comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Next item?
Thank you. The next item is item B4. Jean will present this item, too. This is also the agreement with ACHA regarding the direct payment program.
Yes, ma'am. This, this request your approval of letters of agreement with ACHA for participation in the directed payment program in an amount not to exceed $134,677,522 and 76. Also request that you approve the Intergovernmental Transfer Provider Questionnaires, and then funding will be provided through a non-add-laureum special assessment collected from the hospitals.
Move approval.
Motion approved. Commissioner Myers?
Second.
Second Commissioner Wostel, no comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Jean.
Yes, sir.
Next item?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Wostel's item, item F1. This is to rescind board policy section number 0307, which is the excess proceeds from surplus real property sales.
Thank you, Ms. White. This is pretty straightforward. Every board deserves the right to allocate funds and decide what their current needs are. I don't like any policies existing, and I look forward to removing further ones that inhibit and restrict the current board's ability to allocate funding towards their most dire needs, so I move to rescind this policy.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Owen, Commissioner, Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I'd just like to talk about this just briefly. We all know that when it comes to affordable housing and the number of people who have come before this board, it's talking about the need for housing. And so far, we have, I'll run it off to $100,000 that have been invested into affordable housing program. And I understand where you're coming from to make it open, Commissioner Wostel, but if we still can consider rotating where other departments will receive funding, not just all one, would be good, too. We all know housing is, is real critical here in Hillsborough County, particularly if you live in the city of Tampa. Hillsborough County, folks are coming to us every board meeting, talking about housing. And so this is what these funding funds have been able to help those individuals through our department leverage dollars for housing. Not, I'll leave it there.
Okay, do we have any other comments, questions? All right, please record your vote.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Kemp, or Cohen, Kemp and Myers voted no.
Next item?
The next item is a staff report. This is item G2. This is to receive a staff report from the county attorney's office and development services regarding a proposed moratorium on development in Valrico.
Good morning, commissioners. Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. I can be very brief. This item, Commissioner Owen, you asked me to bring back regarding the ability to implement a building moratorium in all high-density development for residential property use ranging from res none and above in the areas impacted by the proposed Valrico Community Plan until its completion. Just to be very brief, there was an act of the legislature that was enacted in the last session, we call Senate Bill 250. At present, because of our geographic location and proximity to the impact of a hurricane last year, we are preempted from taking any action such as a moratorium or any more burdensome or restrictive regulations in our comp plan or land development regulations at this time. That's effective through October 1st of next year. I'll leave it there for now. I can take questions. Adam Gormley and Johanna Long are going to here, take questions if you have.
All right, thank you, Cameron. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, no, I'm going to just simply move to receive the report, and hopefully the, my residents of Valrico see that we're doing everything we can to stop a lot of this unneeded and unnecessary growth that is borderlining your responsible, so thank you.
Second.
Got a motion to receive the report. Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Wostel, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, next item?
All that's left are future issue items.
All right, do we have any future issues? Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several meetings ago, I notified the board that I'd be looking into, and I appreciate everyone's support that supported my nonprofit motion, and that I would be looking into any newly created members on the District 7 solely list that's been added in the next couple of years that I don't feel like have created a program that is now already established and reliant on the property taxes of Hillsborough County. And I have identified two that I will be bringing up as a flag option in tomorrow evening's budget hearing, and those are the names on the reports, if you'd like to review them, are ETBCA and the Future Career Academy. Thank you very much.
Bonnie, do you have that, or, all right, will you send that out to, to board members?
Those two, right. Two flags that will be discussed tomorrow evening.
Okay.
I think it's a heads up that that's coming.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp?
In regards to those who came before us today with the energy bills, and I want to, I did mention that I wanted, and I guess that will just happen, Mr. Cassidy to speak with or meet with Brooke Ward with- with regards to that individual grant and find out. But I would also ask that Mr. Cassidy report back to us on that grant in terms of the limitations and any other availability of grants that we could look at in the future. Just give us any more information we could have in terms of either what we're doing or what we could do or what grants we might have available. I've even heard that the $346 million